Yeah, I didn't see any. We had one underneath the mirrors. I know, right?
Yeah.
I've had a long call.
Black and white is two hours. I don't think it's going to be two hours. Oh, I have six hours. I got six hours of talk.
Exactly. And then you have to turn.
Six hours and 12 minutes. I don't need my love.
So you want me to stop? Do you need me to stop?
Okay. All right. Okay. No, I get this. I get the box sheet.
Also, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh. No, we don't have one.
Andrew.
Oh, wow.
I saw it. Yeah. You know, I can read the box. In between, we got like that much as good.
Get me a chair to go. What's that? What's that? Good man. Thank you. See, you guys still. Hello? Yep. Biancheria is still in there. My side goes. Yeah. Keep us. See the flag.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Worcester School Committee meeting. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, the great and just and eternal. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, they flew through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Here.
Mrs. Clancy?
Here.
Mr. Foley?
Here.
Ms. McCullough? Mr. Monfredo?
Here.
Ms. O'Connellnowick?
Here.
And Mayor Petty?
Here. Okay. First time is to consider the approved amendments to school committee meeting on Thursday, June 17th and June 30th collectively. Approve on the roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough? Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connellnowick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next item is report to the superintendent. Before we do that, I know Sean Sweeney is on the, is he on the line? I guess. So maybe motions to suspend the rules to go to response from the legal councils to request the report on the authority to mandate COVID-19 vaccinations for 21, 22 year as provided under state law for public school employees and school students. So motions to suspend the rules, roll call to suspend the rules.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connellnowick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. So we're on that item. One dash one three seven point one. Does anybody have any questions on it? Ms. Nowick, who's your item?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't, as it happens, have any questions on it. As I remarked to both of our legal counsels who responded offline, that I appreciated the thoroughness of their responses. Obviously, this is an active conversation as I suspect some of my colleagues saw the National School Boards Association also came out with further guidance yesterday. What I did note, though, Mr. Chair, is that the authority of the school committee, first of all, is fairly extensive under both master general law and under the case law that was cited, but that the authority is both strengthened and somewhat held jointly with the Board of Health. Now, we in the city, honestly, because we're so well-served by the medical community, have had limited interactions with our Board of Health, but it is quite explicitly the Board of Health that has the legal authority locally, looking at the case law, looking at what was presented, both by Attorney Tobin and by Attorney Sweeney. And so my proposal, Mr. Chair, is that we, as a school committee, sometime in the next two weeks, I know that there's probably going to need to be another meeting that we'll have to have before we talk about next back to school. I would propose, Mr. Chair, that before we have that meeting, that the school committee meet jointly with the Board of Health to have exactly this conversation and quite possibly also have a conversation around masking as it may be something that is a local authority question as well. So my motion, Mr. Chair, is for the school committee, in the next two weeks, to meet jointly with the Board of Health prior to whatever meeting the superintendent needs us to have for us to discuss back-to-school measures.
You want us to, we can just have the Board of Health come into a meeting.
Yeah. Well, we would, I, we would want to arrange for a joint meeting. I mean, they're a public board as well and it would want to, we'd want to make sure it was posted on both sides.
We just have Dr. Hirsch to come in then.
I beg your pardon?
You can just ask Dr. Hirsch to come in.
No, that's actually the, the point. If you let, if you read the legal counsel very carefully, we've been relying on Dr. Hirsch and I have no objection to that, but it's the Board of Health that actually holds legal authority under the decisions that have been made in the past regarding things like vaccinations and other health measures. So again, this is not an any way to denigrate both the Department of Public Health or any of the doctors that work there. It simply is that the legal case law makes it clear that it's actually the Board of Health that holds authority.
That's correct.
So that would be, that, that is why I make the proposal that I do.
So we're going to try to schedule a meeting?
Schedule a meeting prior to whatever meeting that I'm sure the administration will need for us to talk about back-to-school measures. Yes.
Oh, people ready to vote this? I don't, but we can have.
I mean, we need, we would need a quorum of us and a quorum of them. That's actually not that many people, I think, probably we can manage, particularly given the ongoing powers to meet remotely if necessary.
Can we get a written opinion from them and just have them come back with something for the meeting?
I think we probably should deliberate with both bodies. I think that that probably, we may, we probably want to share the, the information that we have with them to make sure that they're as informed as we are.
I guess, does everybody want some meeting or? Ms. Biancheria?
I certainly appreciate anyone who has done any research in reference to this, but we are in July. We are looking at three or four weeks. We have some major decision to make as far as mask wearing, as far as six feet, three feet, two feet. I would appreciate Sean giving us the information, legal opinion certainly, also a legal opinion on what we need to make a decision on and what is being decided for us. I would like a legal opinion as far as that's concerned. As far as having any additional meetings, I'm sure we can work around people's schedules and so on, whether they're zooming or coming in person.
You can do a zoom.
But I would like to get weekly updates on this process due to the fact that summer goes by very quickly and we all have extremely busy schedules. However, I feel as though the legal opinion is absolutely necessary to move forward with this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we'll get the opinion and we'll get the, you can schedule those meetings?
Yeah.
Oh, we have the legal opinion, yeah. So can we schedule the meetings then? Okay. Mr. Foley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I support the idea. I'm getting more and more concerned as we see what's happening across our country with the, the spread of the Delta variant and having a conversation with the Board of Health. And, and I'd love to see Dr. Hirsch and Dr. Castillo be present as well to give us their feedback. And I think, you know, I think we're looking at issues relative to vaccinations, looking at issues relative to mask wearing and some of the distancing. And I, I think it's an ever-changing, unfortunately, an ever-changing time right now as the, the variant is growing. So I think we would, we would benefit and, and I'll just let the public know, it, it wouldn't surprise me if we're making a decision sometime mid-August or even third week of August about something in the school year, then maybe at the last minute because of what's changing in, in the country still. Thank you.
Have the clerk figure out how she's going to schedule those meetings and contact everybody on the dates. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. Also, Desi is supposed to also give us guidance. The timeline is sometime between the first two weeks in August for them also to issue that guidance regarding mandatory, you know, vaccinations, mask wearing and social distancing. My, my only concern about the mandatory vaccinations is where it's been very clear from the commissioner, there is no remote learning next year. If we exclude students because of vaccinations, then how do they get their education? I guess that will be part of that conversation we will have when these two groups get together.
Okay. Maybe we can try to schedule it probably, I know it would be a little cramped for time, but after Desi comes out with her recommendations about the same time would be helpful if we can, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I, first of all, I, I saw the same information that the superintendent did and was crossing my fingers. And then, of course, the governor was asked today if there was a plan for further guidance and he said no, which I think there may be a little bit of interdepartmental tussling going on, maybe, but we probably don't want to schedule around Desi, given what we know.
Okay. Let's try to schedule those meetings. Okay.
With Desi or without?
Well, let's see what, I figured, would you say the second, first, the second week of August? So maybe try to do the second week of August. Okay. Okay. So we can file that? What's that? I think we're all set. So I think Paige and Sean, we don't need them any longer until executive session? Okay. Okay. So we'll file that. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Ms. Biancheria?
Yes. Thank you. I guess I have to make, do I make that in a motion form that I would like a legal opinion prior to making any meetings or making any decisions on what we need to do?
Yep.
Okay. So that would be a, a motion that I would make to make sure that we have all the legal opinions prior to walking in the door.
If there's any more that we had, yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay. We have the superintendent's reformative report based on her goals, mid-cycle. Madam Superintendent?
Okay. Very pleased to present the mid-cycle goal review. Before I start, I do want to share that this has been quite a year for everybody. And we only got through the year because of the training and the collaboration with the principals and the schools. Some of them are, are here tonight, so I want to make sure that we recognize and thank all the principals as well as the teachers in every school that they worked endlessly to work with remote learning, something that none of us had had any experience with. And I want to thank the parents. Many of them joined the classrooms and were part of the instruction also. And I want to thank my team. They really were working some days, 12 hours a day, putting together a remote school. So building, it's like building a regular school with brick and mortar, but doing it virtually. And there were skills that all of us needed to learn to do that. And what really did come out of that is a very collaborative structure, both for the principals and the district office and also between parents and their students and the teachers. So with that, I'm proud to present to you our mid-cycle goal review. So as you know, the cycle for the superintendent's goal review is a cycle that is put together by Desi. We started at self-assessment in the fall of last year, the analysis, goal setting and plan development. We then implemented the plan. We're at the mid-cycle review and the summative would be sometime in December. So in the standards and indicators for effective administrative leadership, these are a different way than what we have done it before. In the past, we had to address all the indicators and the standards. And with the new superintendent's evaluation, you're allowed to pick one or two indicators in the standards and they have to be aligned to your goals. So there are four standards, very similar to what is in the principal's evaluation and similar in some areas with instruction, family, community engagement and professional culture in the teacher's evaluation process. So under instructional leadership, the two areas that I connected to my goals are 1B instruction and 1E data-informed decision-making. From management operations, 2B HR management and development and 2E fiscal systems. And under family and community engagement, the whole part about engagement, 3A and 3C on communication. And then also on professional culture, cultural proficiency, which is 4B and 4D continuous learning. So I'll be addressing how those were done in my goals. So in the human resource management and development, as you can read what that means, I rated myself proficient. And in the fiscal systems, I rated myself proficient. And management operations, the overall rating, proficient. Do we skip some? Let's see here. No. Okay. Now, these are the goals that we had approved on December 3rd. The first is the student learning goal. As you can see, the focus indicators are in there. The goal was 50% of students in grades four, five and six that participated in the Fall STAR baseline math assessment will achieve an SGP of 40 or higher by June 2021. That goal, we did not meet. We met it only for grade six and we did not meet it for grades four and five. So mid-year, we are still progressing on that goal. The professional practice goal, and again, you can see the indicators in there, through the 2021 school year, create a school and district community environment that promotes two-way communication with families and provides resources for effective student learning performance. We exceeded that and I'll give you the evidence later on in this conversation. The district improvement goal, one, increase diversity of new hires to 17% by June 2021 and continue to improve both the recruitment and retention rate of diverse staff. We met that goal. The district improvement goal, two, to develop an initial, sorry, an annual budget that is aligned with the strategic plan. We did do that, participated in a lot of budget meetings and exceeded that. District goal, three, lower the out-of-school suspension rate by 5% for special education group C students with emotional disabilities using evidence-based targeted interventions and resources by June 2021 and exceeded that. The indicator for instruction, you can all read what that requires, proficient in that. The indicator for data-informed decision-making, also proficient. So the overall rating for standard one, instructional leadership, proficient. The goals on engagement is also proficient and communication exceeded. So the overall rating for standard three, family and community engagement, proficient. Cultural proficiency, proficient. Continuous learning, proficient. Overall rating, four, professional culture, proficient. And now I'm going to go to the link to the evidence to show the evidence of all of those goals. Okay? So the first professional goal again is create a school and district community environment that promotes two-way communication with families, provides resources for effective student learning and performance. The benchmarks that we agreed on were listed in the middle column, expand family support for remote learning, technology literacy and access by providing multilingual print and video tutorials of digital learning tools, conducting live multilingual technology demonstrations and webinars, offering webinars on curriculum tools and resources, providing digital drop-in and calling hours for families and hosting onsite technology drop-ins, collaborating with community groups and holding technology training sessions for community caregivers, continue to revise and add to caregivers' tech academy website and monitor connectivity and device access. So if you click on the data link, okay, this is, there's the goal. So here is the data. 22 support videos were created, 11 videos were translated into 11 languages, seven videos did not need audio. This was all available for support through our Caregivers Academy online. 5,020 hotspots were available to homes and shelters, 2,323 pre-K, which were 794 in the pre-K and kindergarten, 1529. Students were given one-to-one iPads by their school of enrollment and supported. 21,663 students in grades one through 12, which included transition and new citizen young adults, were one-to-one. Chromebooks were distributed by their school or their program of enrollment and they were supported. Staff were in contact with families also to support technology access issues. On the multilingual virtual sessions for caregivers, 209 unique forums and webinars were developed, offered to support families and caregivers in 12 months. So that started July 2020 and went to June 21. We held four public forums with the school committee also. We had interpretation available July 2020 through April 2021. 66 additional district-level public forums with interpretations available were held addressing transitions, special needs and technology support. We held four Worcester Public School District Spanish forums. 135-plus building-based virtual information systems were offered at 45 Worcester Public School buildings and programs. Family engagement events, 225-plus unique family engagement opportunities we offered in 10 months from September to June. Examples were our site councils, our parent-teacher groups, our LPAC, our special ed PAC, student recognition, school-based celebrations and community-building events. Family and community questions were placed on the website. We answered them daily and responded to by appropriate staff. 97 staff questions were submitted online and we also responded to them. 202 medical forum reopening questions were submitted and we also answered those. The superintendent, myself, organized and participated in 461-plus meetings with the community and agencies to share information and coordinate support for our students and families in the city. This is, I'm just going to show you a few links to the videos so you can see examples. I know people watching may not have seen this information. So this is example of our Caregivers Technology Academy site videos. Here are all the videos and then here's all the languages that we translated in so that our caregivers, which could have been parents, grandparents, anyone that was taking care of our students, had access to how to teach their child, how to know how to use Chromebooks, how to know how to use the internet, how to, how to use our apps such as Seesaw, how to get technology support and also video conferencing. We had several caregivers' technology. We had several Caregivers Technology webinars. There's an example, we had drop-in sessions. We had recorded webinars. I give you some examples of those here. So if you wanted to go look at them, there's a curriculum overview series. There's a gender for students. There's a math curriculum overview. We're also training our caregivers and our staff if you wanted to know how to use the Google Calendar. There are a lot of training resources that were developed. Our teachers really liked our training resources, and this is the quick links. You can see there is site by language. We taught people how to use Clever, how to use the Google Classroom, how to use iPads, how to use Seesaw, how to use Meet. We did it in our languages. We also have a translation line, and we also use the YouTube channel. I think it's important for me to also share that. None of this was developed. When we closed school on March 12, 2020, everything I'm showing you did not exist. And it's what this development of this, with everybody working together and everyone learning together, and really pushing that as we have to learn this, is what got us through this last year. So here's some data points for you. So the total number of sessions were 55. Total number of webinars, 8. So this shows us, you know, the site. How often did somebody hit the site? So we were able to tell, are people using this site? Is this valuable? So total number of attendees, for example, at this time was 283. And we also had charts. So we monitored the data to make sure that, you know, the sites were being useful, and that if there was something else that we needed to do to improve that. We also, Nellie Mae Grant, we wrote the Nellie Mae Grant, and we received it for expansion of languages. We continued to add resources in creating school toolkit. As an aside, yesterday, we had a phone call from Nellie Mae to check to see what we were doing with the grant, and they told us they were impressed with the work that Worcester has done regarding expansion of languages and the use of technology. So there is some family engagement data now, still on the same goal, that I'd like to share with you. So this list that I'm showing you here, I'm gonna make it a little bigger, is what we did for all schools and programs, and then what we did in just secondary schools, and also what we did in the elementary school. So I'll leave this up for you to look at for a second. I can make it a little larger if you need to see that. The work regarding family engagement was, we already thought we did, you know, a great job with family engagement, and now with the pandemic and having to reach everybody virtually, we really ramped up that work. So this is for the all schools, and then all secondary schools, and then all elementary. Also, I know the school committee is always interested in our site councils meeting in our schools, what is being done in site councils. So I also included here a list of all the site councils in all our schools, how many unique visits their website had, what was the information that they talked about, and you can see that we have all our schools here added here as to what happened with engaging and connecting with our families during this most difficult year. So also, we, the answers on the parent community online, there were 2,424 online questions with a translation function that were asked for us, and we answered them. I'm gonna give you a sample of what the parent, Spanish parent forums looked like. So there was one on 811, 1028, and 222. Here is a copy of the brochure that was developed. We distributed it. It was also distributed by our community partners. And of course, we had translations at each of those forums. It was important that we also translate, you know, McKinley Vento family letter. Even though we were virtual, remote, most of the time, it was really important that we made sure that our families, you know, had connections to information about homelessness, information about scattered sites, information about being doubled up, information about where they could get food. And so this is a letter that went out from Mar Mahoney's office, and this was translated also into the eight languages. Con Melendez did a lot of work with the LPAC. It actually launched in the 1819 school year by the Office of English Language Programs. And this is just an example of the work that was done by the LPAC. There were community partner quarterly meetings. There was virtual information sessions that were held. And we use an asset-based approach to build relationships with our families so that we would know their strengths, we'd know their stories. We were creating a welcoming environment. And this, we also did this for all families. And this is an example of our spring flyer that we did this spring. This is translated into English, Spanish, Vietnamese, Tuil, Arabic, Albanian, Portuguese, and Nepali. Let me see if I can get it. So that is, this is English learner, parent advisory council, LPAC. They meet the second Tuesday of each month. These are the dates they met. And we want to expand their leadership skills also online. So training modules were also developed for our families. And then you could register to attend. And that was all held virtually. We also supported our families in the virtual world. So this is the multilingual family engagement strategies that we used. So we use, as I already spoke to you about, the Caregivers Technology Academy. We had drop-in sessions that were in-person and online. We had community partner training and feedback. We provided training to PPAL, to YMCA, and YWCA. We also developed Caregivers, Caregivers school-based toolkits. We provided assistance. We did purchase Google Voice so that our teachers could speak to their families and to their parents. As you know, we had a hotspot program, and we also, thanks for working with the city manager and the mayor, were able to get spectrum-free internet program for those families. Also, very unique is that we also created an orientation video for Claremont Academy. It is on here, if you are interested in looking at it at some other time. We also did an overview video on GoToMatrix. We have very multilingual video tutorials and information, and we made sure that they were organized by quick links. And also, we developed that parent portal so that parents were able to get access to bus changes, scheduling changes. As you know, we did many schedule changes due to changing from remote to hybrid to finally in-person. Now, our special education families, we wanted to make sure that we did extra outreach to them. So this is an example of our special education department. We held information sessions on dyslexia and language-based disabilities on February 12th, on April 14th, and also on January 12th. We also held a virtual celebration of our kids in Jerry Roach's program, the transition program. And we also, so we celebrated special education success in their story, and we did that also virtually. We sent newsletters home to parents. The L newsletter is called Voices. You can see that, it's right here. It's, this is the first one we sent November 2020. The subject is which voices will be heard. We gave information about WIDA, the e-summit. We did a book study called Breaking Down the Wall that was very well-attended by L teachers and also district staff. We gave some information about PIC, the Parent Information System, and the center, and how that works. And then we talked about Imagine Learning, which, as the school committee knows, we purchased this year, and it has been wonderful to have that Imagine Learning. And we talked about the bilingual programs, what's coming up, cross-linguistic connections, data analysis. So the newsletters were full of really important information. So we also draft a framework for working with multilingual families. So this is Worcester Family Engagement Self-Assessment that we did. We want to have, a number-one focus for us was building positive relationships. And this is our plan for self-assessment first on building positive relationships. This was on promoting family well-being, self-assessment on that, and also on promoting pathways for partnership with families. And this is the rubric that we used for that. We talked about supporting child and youth development, learning, health, and also well-being. So that's our template of engaging with families and of self-assessing ourselves on where we were with that. Several organizations partner with the Worcester Public Schools. So what we gave you here for academic support is, these are all the agencies that we partnered with this year. How many students are involved, what grade they were, what schools or demographics that we need to know to work with, what was the time of support? Most of it was after school, the type of support. Also, the highlights of supporting remote learning and challenges with supporting remote learning. So that's our community organization academic support. Not sure if you can all see that, but it was working with ACE, Cultural Exchange Through Soccer, Worcester Alliance for Refugee Ministry, Southeast Asian Coalition, RAP, PPAL, the Worcester Family Partnership, Lock Mentoring Program, Latino Institute at Worcester State with Kathy Orango, and Worcester Public Library. We also, there were monthly community meetings that were attended. This was for Ls. So there was also attendance. This is the agenda for the monthly meetings that we did with the community. So they started August 31, 2020, and they go all the way down to June 7. Met every single month on those, and there's a list of the registration list, the agenda, and the number of organizations that are in attendance. So I think it's important that people listening in the community realize that anywhere from 11 to 16 organizations were present at these meetings. So Community Partnership spreadsheet is another community engagement spreadsheet that we used. We took all the managers, and we listed additional organizations that we all partnered with. So some additional ones that I didn't already read to you was Seven Hills Foundation, Essentria, Anna Maria College, Art Reach, Sumption College, Berkeley School of Music, Black Families Together, Boston College, Boys and Girls Club, Broad Metal Brook. And then we also included this, the Chief Diversity Office's work and networking, and then the many things we did in partner with the city of Worcester. We did many Connect Ed messages to the community, to the point that when we had graduation, parents asked me, please don't call me during the summer, because we called them so much. They said, please don't call me. So, and they laughed, but, you know, we, we were constantly informing parents through Connect Ed. So this is some, I gave you an example of messages that we did, Connect Ed, superintendent's updates that also were posted on the website, and also our Worcester Public School app that went out from there. This is, again, we, I don't know if you know, because it just happened recently, but we have our own bilingual radio station now. It's going extremely well. I'm a guest at it. This is our bilingual radio station. We bring different topics, and people call in and speak to us. And it's WCUW 31.3 on FM, and we're on every Wednesday, 4 to 5. So as the school committee knows, we had many community forums. We had the Educational Model Response on August 10th, February 12th, March 15th, March 29th. We had Learning Model Response about remote or in-person learning survey, April 3rd, May 4th, and then May 17th start date. We also had online question submissions for community forums where they would put the questions first, and then we would do the presentation, and then answer their questions. And we also had the Middle School Caregiver Interest Survey for the Remote Academy. You were all, school committee was all here when we presented this. This was also on our website. This is just an example of what the district transitioned to hybrid learning. But we had this document for every single transmission, transition that we did. We also had meetings on budget, which also does, we'll be talking about that in another goal, but that is another communication that we use to talk to parents and community members regarding the Worcester Public School budget. We've had a lot of the Doherty Building Hearings, also planning and updates. I participated as a member of the Doherty High Building Committee. We've had a lot of meetings on the New South High that will soon be opened. I'm a committee member, and I'm also on the district oversight group. We also had community forums with special ed parents during this time. So I included with you, for you, the first one we had, which was February 10th on parents' rights, the IEP process, and it was all put on by the Office of Special Education. We also had other forums that were in Spanish for children with disabilities, families that have children with disabilities. When we were looking at becoming, when we were equity detectives, working with Dr. Irvin Scott from Harvard University, we discovered that there was some concern about at 6th grade, how do decisions be made for students going into the 7th grade that does not prevent them from getting into advanced placement courses when they get to high school? So we held four family scheduling forums, one for each of the middle schools with interpreters to explain scheduling, to suggest to parents that they try to get their children in honors classes. And that work will continue regarding scheduling and looking to see how at grade 6 are we setting the course for a are we setting the course for a student's life by the decisions that we make? We also had a South High family meeting, remote return for South High because they had to go back to remote so that they could demolish the current school. And this is an example, as you all know. You also attended scheduling forums. So we had scheduling forums, and these were the schedulings that we did in the scheduling forums so that we could explain the schedule to parents so their children would be well-informed. We also had Special Education Advisory PAC meetings. And this is an example of the PAC meeting, the sessions. I gave you the agenda, the times, and all these are in the community resources that were given to the families. Special Education also had family-based trainings. Partnered with community, Quinn-Sig Community College, and there was a PAC meeting. We talked about transitioning from high school to college. This was the Worcester Public Schools Special Ed PAC and QCC Student Accessibility Services. And we had that on March 25th from 4:30 to 5:30. Let me get to the next one. We also offered a parent workshop on social-emotional well-being during the continued pandemic. And that was a SPED SEL Leadership Team. They provided an agenda. You know, it was about reinforcement, how you can use it at your home also, about token economies, behavioral contracts, home learning schedules, about anxiety and how do you deal with anxiety during the pandemic? What are the coping strategies that you can use with your entire family and community and Worcester Public School resources? And then we explained all of those things. I gave you a copy of that work we did for special ed parents. We updated the parent portal. And we wanted to take, this is data on the parent portal. This tells you how many people were involved, how many accounts were created, how many students were claimed, the access to the parent portal. As you know, we're still in summer school right now. We really wanted to get the information out to parents about summer school, communication again. These are all the registration forms that are done in all the languages. Also, information about summer school. So I thought you would find it very interesting because, again, this goal was about communicating in as many ways as you can to families. And in the Worcester Public Schools, you have to communicate through translation and documents. So between 9, 2019 and 3/12/2020, we translated 3,533 documents, which is 25,365 pages. 2,255 in person or on video, 3,250 phone interpretations in 50 different languages, for a total of 28,703 minutes. Between 3/13/2020 and 6/30/2020, we translated 2,393 documents, 100 in-person or video interpretations, 5,600 phone interpretations in 58 different languages, for a total of 54,399. And then from 7/1/2020 to this June, we translated 7,366 documents or 50,380 pages, 3,143 in-person or video interpretations, and 14,990 phone interpretations in 74 language, of a total of 144,346 minutes. So I think that, you know, this, and then this is just a chart showing you what we did, interpret. Again, we are communicating with our families, interpreting in their language, and making them feel welcome in the Worcester Public Schools. So that is the end of Goal One. Onto Goal Two, Student Learning Goal. 50% of students in grades four, five, and six participated in the Fall Star Baseline Math Assessment will achieve an SGP of 40 or higher by June 2021. So this is the goal, again, that I told you we are still working on. So let's look at the data on this goal. So the chart summarizes the student growth from fall of 20, let me put it a little bigger, thank you guys, so you can see it, the people that are in here. Eyes out. From the fall of 2020 to spring of 2021. Now remember, we're only doing, for this presentation, grades four through six, because that was the goal. We divide them into two categories. Low growth is if you're less than 40, and typical and high growth is if you're more than 40. And then divided by remote or in-school. So as you can see, the green shows you that we did make that goal for grade six at 53%. In grade four, 60% of the students had low growth. In grade four, 40% had high growth. In grade five, 54% had low growth, 46 had high growth. Grade six, 47 had low growth, 53 had high. So 50, if we add them all together, four through six, 54% had low growth and 46% had high growth. Now, if we go over to the far right, it's not a surprise that on all testing that we did, students did better if they were in school than they were remote. And there can be a lot of factors for that. It's hard to test students when they're in remote, and it's a much more controlled setting when they're in school. So, remote students, 57% of students at remote showed low growth in math. 43% showed high growth in remote. In-school, 52 showed low growth and 48 showed high growth. Now if we want to go to the number of students here. So in grade four, 954 students showed low growth. 627 showed high. Grade five, low growth was 813 students and 689 had high. Grade six, 767 had low growth and 879 had high growth. Again, looking over here again at who was remote, who was in school. 908 students remote showed low growth and 1626 showed low growth that were in school. High growth, remote 686, in-school 1509. Now we wanted to look at them by grade and look at remote and in-school. So in grade four, 64% of the kids in remote had low growth. 36% of the kids in remote had high. In-school, 59% had low growth and 41% had high. Grade five, remote, 57% had low growth, 43 had high growth. In-school, 53 had low growth and 47 had high. Grade six, remote, 50% had low growth and 50% had high. And in-school, 45% had low growth and 55% had high. So in looking at that, you know, the question would be, what are we going to do next year? Because we're showing that our current, before June, grade four and five students have concerning amount of low growth. So, you know, the first part of that is we have to assess exactly what that gap is. And we're working on, I'm sure you may have seen that, Desi has a cloud, a acceleration roadmap for students. And what that basically means is that you don't tell a fourth-grade teacher they're going to teach third-grade work. It's a whole way of the fourth-grade teacher incorporating the skills that kids need to learn, that they may have a gap for, into grade four. So the next question is, how did the subgroups do here? Interesting enough, statistically, low growth for male or female was about the same, 54 and 53. High growth, 46 and 47. So there wasn't a large difference between whether you were male or female. There was a large group, gap, not surprisingly, but there was a very large gap between not-low income and low income. So as you can see, not-low income met the goal of 55%. Low income was 43%, high 57% low growth. Also, our two subgroups that we are always looking at with data and looking for ways to increase their knowledge and decrease the gap are our L population and our students with disabilities. So for our L population, not, for our L population, 65% had low growth and 35% had high. Non-L, 50% had low growth and 50% had high growth. We're going to go with our special ed population now. Non-special ed, I was pretty close, 51% low growth and 49% high. And our students with disabilities, 66%, pretty close to the L of 65%, had low growth and 34% had high. And now we want to know, okay, what race groups are struggling? Because that's always a very important part of what we're looking at. So if you look at this, we can see where the green is, that who had high growth? So our white population had high growth. Our Asian population met the goal. Our multi-race, non-Hispanic met the goal, and our Native American met the goal. Who did not make the goal? So our Hispanic-Latino population had 59% low growth and 41% high. And our African-American population had 53% low growth and only 47% high growth. So what are some of the assessments, the math assessment data that we looked at? And this is what resources could we use and did we use? So we, this is a principal's training. And this was on assessments and star training that principals received training on, the schedule, what the assessment schedule was. Included in this, I also gave you the parent guardian report that was provided to parents and guardians, the administration for family, home administration of the star, as well as a teacher guide for them giving the star data. We provided a lot, the Office of OCPL did provide other supports. You're looking now at the Common Assessment Data that, through the Envisions Program. The quarters are not related in that there's different standards that are taught in quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, quarter four. Understanding that, you know, if you can't, if you're learning, for example, to add and subtract in quarter one with single-digit numbers, and when you go to quarter two, you're learning to add and subtract with double-digit numbers, there is some carryover in skills, but the skills are different. So in quarter one, 57% of the students met the benchmarks in grade three. And as you can look across, 45% in quarter two, 56% in quarter three, and 49% in quarter four. Again, those are not, you can't compare those. Each of them are separate quarters. And I put the participation rate in there so you can see how many students were included in this, which is a large sample. Quarter four, I mean, grade four, quarter one is 62%, quarter two 49, quarter three 39, and quarter four, 52% met the benchmarks. The same thing for, as you can see, grade five, 46, 38, 35, 54. And grade six, 53, 40, 46, and 48. Now this is the Alex data. It wasn't something that you asked for. However, I thought this was interesting. You would find, because it's math. These are students in grades seven through 12. So students using Alex. It tells you the number of hours they used it, and then it tells you where they were for their beginning and where they are with their ending, and what tasks they have been successful at. So in the beginning, for middle school math, they started 53 and went up to 82. There was a gain of 29 points. Algebra one, there was a gain of 14 points. Geometry, a gain of 14 points. And Algebra two, a gain of nine points. ST Math is one of my favorite programs. It's an expensive program. When I first became superintendent, I really wanted to get that. And the Worcester Public Schools were able to get only one in one school, but it was Union Hill, and that set for us the confidence of the ST Math group. And we can say now we're very proud. We have it in every elementary school. So how that works is, there's puzzles, there's problem solving, there's informative feedback that students get. Let me just make this a little bigger for you to see. So this shows you the harder, easier questions, the patterns. And you can see that students made great progress. We actually received a lot of congratulations from ST Math as being a model program that they are toting through the state of Worcester Public Schools and the use of ST Math. So you can see that, you are seeing that there is progress there. Kids went from 54 to 65, 69 to 75. So there, all the way down, there is progress that students made on the ST Math. So on this ST Math, you can see that 12,861 students were doing the puzzles. You can see how many, 16 million puzzles were completed. 111,000 objectives were conquered. And you can see the number of minutes that were played. So an average of 57 minutes per week, and our students were solving an average of 33 puzzles per week. And then this is a list of all the professional development activities that were all given in the area of math. And then the next thing, still on the same goal, is our effort to continue to observe teacher practice in math. So this is the characteristics of high-quality instructional practices. We are working, all principals are involved in a network leadership group. We work with Brett Lane from Instill and Giselle Martin-Kemp from LCI. It's an instructional walkthrough tool. It was used virtually this year. So the walkthrough tool looks like this. It's a Google Sheet. Everybody during the year when we were in person, we have it on our phones. You go into a classroom, you look at certain targeted skills. For example, Dimension One is academic goals and skills. You rate what you see, one through four. We have look for, so you know what you're looking for. It tells you in the rubric what one, two, three, and four is. We also look for effective use of time. And we also look for DOK, which is Student Cognition and And we also look for DOK, which is Student Cognition and Depth of Knowledge. We also do Dimension Four, which is use of formative or in-class assessments. So besides teachers learning how to use technology, communicating with families, checking every day to see if everybody emotionally was well, taking training on literacy and math, we also made sure that we did classroom walkthroughs. And this is something that I want to share with you that I'm very excited about, and so is Carmen Melendez, I'm very excited about. So we wanted to see what would the outcomes of math intervention in Spanish be? So we wanted to teach children that spoke Spanish math in Spanish. So this was, this happened at two schools, Chandler Magnet and Woodland. This tells you the number of students. I think it's important to see the attendance of the students, because I want to show you what happened. So these were tutors that, they were college professors, they speak Spanish fluently, and I want to tell you that they developed assessments. They gave pre-test and post-test. So this is not evidence-based, but the power of this is something that we're going to continue to explore. So in grade three, there was a pre-test, and 18.2% of the class passed. At midpoint, 100% passed, and 100% passed at the post-test. So it went from 80, I mean, 37.3% to 87.8 average to 84.5. In grade four, it went from 33.7, where only 6.7% passed, to 100, passing again at the midpoint and at the post-test. And in grades five and six, from only 16.7 passing to 80% passing. So this is something that, you know, we want to continue to explore with our students who are native speakers. We also, we also are very involved with UDL, Options for Universal Design Learning. So this is an example, make it a little bit larger, for options for UDL. So Universal Design Learning is what we're doing in the Worcester Public Schools. We're working with a group called CAST. We are, all the administrators are actually reading a book on racial equity and UDL. The combination of working with the UDL model to address issues of equity and anti-racism. And so this is the framework for UDL in the elementary. Give you a couple of seconds, let me just roll it up a little bit so you can see it. This, you know, UDL, Universal Design Learning is about access, engagement, access representation, action and expression, building engagement, persistence, about, what about language and symbols, about expression and communication? How do we internalize engagement? How do we self-regulate? How do we internalize action expression? And how do we internalize representation? So that ends the evidence that is for the student learning goal. The district improvement goal one, which is increasing the diversity of new hires to 17% by June 2021. I'd like to show you the diversity data. This was put together through a variety of sources. So the goal is there. 25.5% of new hires in '21 were people of color. That's a 3.1-point increase from the 22.4, which was taken in the school year 2018. Now, this is from the internal Worcester Public School HR data system. We have 3.4% more staff in '21 than in '18. We have an increase of 160 staff. Worcester Public School has 105 more staff of color in '21 than we had in '18. And I put this in bold. So 20.3 of staff, percent of staff in this '21 year were of color compared to 18.8 in school year 18. The percentage of staff of color increased by 1.5 percentage points. There were 34, 33 more teachers of color, which is 11.2 increase. This is 2 percentage point higher than the increase in white teachers during the same time period. But despite the increase in teachers of color, their proportion in our workforce only increased from 12.8 to 13%. Proud to say that there were 12 more administrative staff in '21. The majority of the staff were white in '18, 82.0, and 84.1 in '21. But there's a 2.1 percentage point increase in white administrative staff in a three-year period. The increase in diversity of new hires to 17%. This is 25.5 of new hires in '21 were people of color. That's a 3.1-point increase from the 22.4 in '18. So there's an overall increase in the percentage of the workforce that has five or a few years' experience from '18 to '21. So 44.8 to 49.6, respectively. We will begin our '21-'22 school year with 12 principals of color, which is 25% leading our schools. And it's interesting that we're looking at the state data, and Worcester Public Schools has a more racially diverse workforce compared to the state since at least school year 16. So in '21, 16.2 of the Worcester Public School staff were non-white, and the state is at So I'm showing you now the Worcester Public Schools Office of Diversity baseline data. So the goal one is the one that we just explained to you. We are committed to increasing the number of qualified teachers of color in the district who represent the cultures of our student population. And then you can read, that's a summary of what I already said. These were Ivan and I sat down. And this is the district goals that we set for this year, and also the strategies for meeting the goals. So we really wanted to increase the number of staff of color in professional ranks. We established drop-in hours for virtual or in-person with the Chief Diversity Officer to support the retention of staff of color. Worked closely with HR to cultivate a diverse candidate pool that is more available to school and district leaders when openings arrive. We are supporting, we initiated and supporting the current instructional assistants of color to pursue teaching as a profession in partnership with the JEP program. We are also providing MTL support. We are also paying for the mentor of each of the instructional assistants by a retired Worcester Public School teacher or administrator. We are continuing to focus on collaborative pathways for our current teachers of color to enter leadership positions, either through coaching, assistant principal, or by being a principal. We are, received a grant, working on a grant actually right now, to increase the number of teachers of color to lead advanced placement courses for the Worcester Public School high schools. And we have increased the number of students involved in Worcester Future Teacher Clubs, and we're going to be piloting it in the middle schools. So the Chief Diversity Officer meets monthly with the city chief diversity offices, which is the Worcester Police Department, the Fire Department, and the City of Worcester. They share conversation about diversity, inclusion, and retention strategies. Ivan also works with the DESI Network meetings, and also collaborates with the Office of English Learners and Special Ed to expand our equity work, diversity, and inclusion in those areas. We have done a lot of training this year on equity, diversity, inclusion, and retention, so we continue to promote training in those areas. She has attended virtual and in-person job fairs, so we could expand the recruitment of applicants of color, working with local colleges, again, try to recruit teacher candidates. We only used to use one school spring in order to recruit candidates. And through Ivan's networking, we now are using additional ways of recruiting, so we're using Handshake. She's reached out to historical Black colleges and universities, attended virtual recruitment fairs. We also are working to strengthen our network on the state, and we're, we share on how do we increase our retention strategies and our recruitment strategies. This year, through the work with RealTalk, there was more people that got involved with the affinity groups. And we are working to create an equity plan with my Superintendent's Advisory Council and also the Worcester Public School legal team. We have a Superintendent's Diversity Committee. This is the dates that we met, February 3rd, March 3rd, March 31st, April 21st, May 5th, and May 19th. We presented our information, Ivan did actually, to the LEON, which is a group that is funded through United Way to work on promoting diversity in the Worcester Public Schools. We had Christina Kuriosis and Kathy Knowles did work on Panorama. Brett and Giselle talked about culture-responsive learn-accented practices. This is all our training that we have done for our staff this year. We're continuing to do next year. We're doing equity work with Dr. Irvin Leon Scott from the Harvard School of Education. We are doing collaborative problem solvings. It'll be in five Worcester Public Schools, full faculty, next year, and then in the spring, another five schools. That is Dr. Stuart Albom. And this is the people who are on our Superintendent's Advisory Committee. They represent all groups in our community, and they also were present on, invited to go to all of them, and different groups of them attended on all job interviews for district positions. And they also attended all the meetings for new principals. So here's our new recruitment outreach. We do Handshake, NEMNET now, we did maybe MatSOL, we go to local colleges. We went to the Merck Fair on April 22nd. We did the Teachers Lounge April Virtual Hiring Fair. And then this is the, we attend all the DESI Diversity Network meetings. For outreach and recruitment, Ivan is part of the Diversity Network. Who's on the Diversity Network is Boston, Lowell, Everett, Worcester, Akron, Ohio. And there were two dates that those groups met. We also are really happy this year that we were able to recruit two bilingual educators from Spain. So they are both working in our dual-language program and our traditional bilingual education program. We ran two ESL MTL course, prep courses for free. Forty-eight educators participated in the ESL MTL prep sessions during this year. We developed a promotional flyer. Show you what it looks like. Again, communicating, we are in need of ESL teachers. So this flyer went out, you're looking to become, to get ESL license. What do you need to pass this? The objectives for the course, the course requirement, the book, please sign up in Teach Point, and these are the topics and the schedule. Due to funding, the ESL Master's Program was not funded last year, however, it is going to begin this fall of 2021. We also have 26 Worcester Public School educators that participated in the bilingual endorsement certificate through BC. And this is an informational flyer on the bilingual certificate program. It was free to eligible Worcester and Milford educators. It was worth around $3,200. It was all taught by Boston College professors, and it was online, and there were hybrid courses also, and the face-to-face sessions were held in Worcester. This is still on the same goal about hiring. So we have a Worcester Public Schools, Worcester State University Administrative Cohort. We have 12 participants in it. Three are candidates of color. They will be interns this fall in their schools of choice. And we also have the JEP program right now. Five of 16 are candidates of color. We are embracing multilingualism by also having a conference. So we ran our first multilingualism conference. It was run by Carmen Melendez and her staff. It was last year, August 20th to 21st. And it's all about our commitment to embracing multilingualism. And this shows you the event. I was the guest speaker, just for the welcome and the opening, and then the subjects that we're talking about, social-cultural competence, talking about equity and social justice. And we are running that conference again this year. So it's going to be at North High School, and more information will be coming. There were 69 people that attended. I really like the affinity meetings that are happening. There were 67 participants that went to these meetings. And there's a steering committee of Worcester Public School, teachers and administrators of color. Here's an example, Dr. Irvin Scott also went and spoke to them. This was the brochure, again, communicating to everybody. You can see our ish here, part of the planning committee on, and also attending the affinity So there is a planning committee. They meet with Ivan and Carmen, and they develop the whole agenda. For example, there was a culture-responsive education conversation on this. There was a conversation about family engagement, brainstorming on activities and ideas for Worcester, so that our allies and our teachers, administrators of color can feel comfortable, feel they have a voice that is listening to them, and have part in any type of structural change. That ends the evidence for Improvement Goal One. And we now, we are in Improvement Goal Two, which is develop an annual budget that is aligned with the strategic plan. So as we know, this is, this was the goal. This is the budget linked to the strategic plan. We went through the strategic plan, and I'm just showing you what is connected directly to the strategic plan, the culture of innovation, and exactly those budget items that school committee is very familiar with from doing the budget sessions. Also have to acknowledge the work of both Brian Allen and Sarah Consalvo, also, and that whole finance team on also putting this budget together. And as we know, it is another award-winning budget that many college people use as their textbook for their class. So welcoming schools, you know, we have our school adjustment counselors. As you can see, I'll just scroll through so you can see how the strategic plan and the budget matches. These for highlights for investing in educators, and highlights for technology and operations. I know you've already seen the budget book. I'm not sure if everybody knows what, I know the principal's in the background here, no. But the allocation meeting, so this is just an example of the schedule. So every year in January, we put out this schedule and... So every year in January, we put out this schedule and principals meet with their school council, they meet with their leadership team and they come, I'll show you the form they come with. And they then present what do they need from the budget so that their schools can meet the needs of the students in their schools. I know there's always a question asked by school committee. Did, did your school council actually go through and actually see all this? So in here are the school council agendas, who was present, and also how they, what they voted on to bring to the budget meeting. Here's what the form looks like. So this is the allocation form that they receive. Their FY '20 number of current staff is filled out. They fill out the FY '21, the change from their current year. And they present why they are requesting those things in the budget. We also joined the school committee for the legislative meeting to talk to our government officials, to ask them to lobby for equitable funding beginning in December 2020. And then these are the community forums that we have. That's the evidence on goal two. And this is our district improvement goal three. Lower the out-of-school suspension rate by 5% for special education group C students with emotional disabilities using evidence-based targeted interventions and resources. So this is our data. So there were 1,125 group C students in the 2021. 743 of those students returned to school on March 15th. 2% of the group C students, which is 15 students that returned to school in March, had an out-of-school suspension. Let me make this a little larger for you. So there were three females and there were 12 males, a total of 15 students. Students with disabilities, there were 15. They could be students with disabilities and Ls, so you see six there. They also could be students with disability being L and low income, so you say 13 here. There were eight Hispanics, four Afro-Americans, two whites, zero Asians, and one multi-race non-Hispanic. The second column shows the district enrollment for each of those groups. And then the discipline rate of how many, what is the discipline rate on the number of students compared to the district enrollment? And what was their discipline rate? Now, there were only 15 students. However, out of those 15 students, which is a very small number, who were the ones that got suspended the most? There were males, there were L students, low-income Hispanic and Afro-American black students. Those underrepresented were white and Asian students. Now this slide here. So 592, so you have to, when you're doing data, compare apples with apples, right? Not with apples and oranges. So there were 592 group C students returned to school in March '21 that were also enrolled in 2019. So we went back to 2019. 14% of those group C students were suspended at least once in 2019, which was 80 students. All right? So again, these are the students that were in school, all right? Group C in 2019 and in school with us now in group C, special ed. None were suspended in 2021. So what are we doing about discipline? So we're continuing our work with collaborative problem solving. What, you know, what is collaborative, collaborative problem solving? So this is basically, there was a pre-survey that was sent out to all staff in 12 schools. And we wanted to gather baseline data. Now collaborative problem solving is from a group called Think Kids. Think Kids is an affiliate of Massachusetts General Hospital. And it's co-authored by, again, Dr. Stuart Albam. So what is that? What is Think Kids? So this is, there's a video here if anybody wants to see it in the future. But basically, it says that Think Kids, we recognize that kids with challenging behavior don't lack the will to behave well, they lack the skill. So this approach is to reduce challenging behaviors, teach kids the skill they lack, and build relationship with the adults in their lives. It says anyone can learn collaborative problem solving and they're here to help us. So there's information and one of their statements that I love is that kids do well if they can. And so it's a very simple, as they say, but a very powerful philosophy. You know, it focuses on building skills like flexibility. What do you do when you're frustrating? You know, what, if you have a low tolerance, how does children learn to problem solve? Rather than motivating kids to behave by, you know, if you do this, you get this reward. Because what happens oftentimes is that eventually when the reward is taken away, the student's behavior regresses. And I think this is very important to know that Mass General Hospital is a number-one ranked department of psychiatry in the United States. So we, we are very excited that we're working with them, that they want to work with us for a whole district approach to working with our kids. So their data is 73% reduction in oppositional behavior during school. Parents report improvements in their parent-child interactions. And there are 71% fewer self-inflicted injuries. So this training, we started, we've already started this training. As you can see, that their training was June 15, 16, 17, 18. That was our Tier One 2020. We were not able to continue during the pandemic because as you teach your skills, you have to practice it on children. And you can't practice it on children remote. So we start our training in August again. And again, we're very excited to do that. So what else are we doing that's helping us to lower our suspension rate? So we're doing culture responsive pedagogy. We have a network leadership documents, a training for our staff, coaches. These are the dates of all the strategy sessions, the TAG grant sessions. TAG grant is what the state gives those schools that are in danger of being underperforming. And it gives you funding so that you're able to close the gap and work on whatever your school needs to improve for your students. So this is a list of the schools that are involved in that. I included also the agendas for the elementary, the middle, the high school, the turnaround agendas for elementary, middle, and high, and also middle school. So this is, we really wanted to integrate culture responsive learn-accented practices into the curriculum and the culture of our schools. So this is a Worcester Public School document. Have a working definition there for you to read. That learn-accented, culture-responsive education simultaneously upholds high standards for academic excellence and cultural competence. It honors the strengths, cultures, lives, and experience of all students, provides them with meaningful and authentic learning experiences. So in our work that we have been working diligently through this year, there are three key tenants. One is academic excellence, cultural competency, and critical consciousness. So the work of culture responsive practices occurs through academic excellence. So it's not taught separately. It's through the work and the practices that culture responsive work is done. And there's a principles for a theory of accent, action. It really is talking about the Worcester Public Schools adopting an equity-oriented framework. And that way of thinking is very crucial as we move forward. It is using data, sharing it. And this year, we spent some time exposing inequities. We also spent some time looking at the impacts of structure and things that we really never thought were happening. We exposed and had a conversation about it and are working every day to try to improve those things. We also, 13 Worcester Public School avid elementary schools, four avid middle schools, and nine elementary teachers registered for two virtual literacy workshops. Also as part of kids, books, and anti-racism series at Leslie in March and April. So each of our participants received two related author books. Each attendee was responsible for bringing the information back to their school. Sharon Leary, who coordinates our avid program, and Stephanie Wong, who's from Leslie University. They had a Google Meet with all our avid site administrators to answer questions. And the workshops are really here for you. And it was about kids, books, and anti-racism series. Also, two additional staff of color did receive a scholarship to attend the multi-day summer series. So this is an example of the workshops. We had a lot of book reads this year. One of the workshops was breathing new life into book clubs. They've been very popular with our staff and also our administrators. We had leadership trainings to inform work with staff on meeting the needs of English-language learners, another on meeting the needs of students with special needs. We started with Dr. Irvin Scott on October 13th. And it was training for our staff on leading for access and equity. We had done part one in the summer. And we now have met with Dr. Irvin Scott six times. And we are continuing, we met him in August training, October training, January training, February training, March, and May, oh, seven times. And, you know, one thing I have to say about the professional development that we were able to offer is that because we had Fridays off for so long without students, we were able to get some of the best professional development for our staff that we never would have been able to get if we didn't, didn't have that time. One person I want to talk about is Dr. Miriam Jernigan-Nowesi. She was, we connected to us through Dr. Heather Forky, who is our partner at UMass Medical School on trauma training. And we received the most amazing training on racial trauma. She is seen as an expert in that area. And it was racial trauma and education. It was all paid for, the series was paid for by the University of Massachusetts Medical School, so I want to make sure I thank them for that. We received, we received materials and a really amazing lecture. And she's interested in working with us again. We also had staff meetings to work with building level staff and students. So I listed these for you, just to tell you a few of them. We talked about trauma support in September 4th. October 9th, strategies to reduce anxiety with students. December 18th, Dr. Heather Forky on isolation, that and loneliness. That was an amazing training for us because as you know, by December 18th, we were still home and we were still in remote. And not only were students feeling isolation and lonely, but so were staff. On January 24th, we had Sandy Hook Promise, protecting children from gun violence and prevention, and also Second Step. And then on May 19th, engagement strategies for students. Right here, I have also for you a list of all the Worcester Public School UDL overview work that we did, universal design learning. There were five sessions. There are videos including in this. There were coaches session, there were district administration team sessions. Worcester Public School UDL, there's 101 course was established and offered in the spring or summer 2021. We have 50 participants to date and we're going to be continuing that with 2122. Here, I think this is so timely. I know the school committee had a presentation by Kathy Knowles about Panorama. We're using Panorama in grades seven through 12. Part of the Panorama is that students answer their own, answer surveys. So Panorama believes you cannot support the whole child until you know what the whole child looks like. So they talk about your data has to be actionable, you have to have insight about the whole child that includes social-emotional learning. So we did SEL questions for the students. And this was the student competency we did in the fall. And then also about student supports in the environment. And this tells you about their social awareness, 58% had social awareness, 51 growth mindset, emotional regulation, 45, and self-efficacy, 37. Sense of belonging, that kids felt like they belonged was only 40%. And engagement was 30. Now again, that was in the fall of 2020. This also tells us who's on track for college and career readiness, on track for graduation, who's at risk and who is critical. So a teacher can see all their students and by these colors, they can tell who is at risk and, and who isn't. And so this is an example of, of the work that we did. Green means that, for example, this is South High, all students green, academics. Yellow was attendance behavior, green again, SEL. Some kids may need some additional work on that. So the key findings were encouraging for us with the Panorama. So, so in fall, growth mindset, 51%, favorability, and spring, we kept it. The social awareness went up by 1%. Emotional regulation, being able to regulate your emotions, went up by 3%. Self-efficacy went from 37% to 41%. Sense of belonging went up 1%, engagement stayed at 30. We also did the equity survey with our staff. And the students did the one in the winter on equity. And the faculty also did it. And diversity and inclusion, 79% of the students felt that diversity, inclusion was recognized and valued and that there was cultural awareness and action by 65%. The staff, their scores were 68%. Just our students culturally aware and adults, 64%. And educating all students at 75%. So we felt as though those were good starting places. Also, we wanted to do state, strength-based leadership training with our principals. So everybody did a survey. And that strength base is about building your team and empowering the individual in you. It's part of the Gallup Strength-Based Assessment. We did the meetings on the Clifton Strengths on October 5th and October 6th. And then principals were consider that, look at their team and their building, look at that Clifton Strengths assessment, and be able to identify what leadership they have in their building that will help to make the most improvement for the students in the building. I gave you some more information on that, what is strength-based leadership for the L department, and how do we leverage, leverage these strengths? The special ed department developed a new FBA evaluation template, functional behavioral assessment, what FBA stands for. And also there was a behavior assessment also by the Office of Social-Emotional Learning. We increased the number of functional behavioral assessments. So what does that mean? That means if a student is experiencing some difficulty in the behavioral area, do an assessment, and then he would know what kind of interventions that you need to have. So 102 behavioral assessments since 820. And also we did a lot of special ed school-based training on remote engagement for special ed students. We did crisis intervention. And then in the spring, we did return to in-person preparation. We knew that We knew that our students were going to be anxious coming back, so we did a training on skill building to reduce anxiety and challenging behaviors in students during challenging times. It was a nine, two 90-minute sessions by two experts in the area. Every faculty member in the Worcester Public Schools saw those two films. There's a facilitator's guide that was developed, and there was a participant note taker. And then we had a spring newsletter on behavioral services. So that is the end of the evidence and the presentation on the goals. Again, I just want to say that we met or exceeded every goal halfway through the year. It's only my mid-year, and we are still working on math progress for grades four and five.
Thank you. Mr. Marferal?
Wow. What an outstanding mid-cycle report. May I congratulate the superintendent and her team and the principals for the many accomplishments as we saw here tonight. As we know, Superintendent Beninda has done an outstanding job in moving our system forward, and has stepped up with her team to deal with the pandemic crisis, and which we're still concerned about. She has been an important team player with the mayor and the city manager in meeting the needs of the community during this crisis, helping with supplies in the city, providing much-needed resources to our children and families. The idea of the city working together to provide the best education for our children has been ongoing during this, during the tenure of Superintendent Beninda. And as we heard tonight, her commitment to education and the community has been ongoing. She has continued to be a strong and committed leader, and has moved our system to the next level. Her qualities, as we well know, of commitment, especially passion, empathy, honesty, and integrity certainly make up her character. She's a leader who motivates others, is a good listener, and a skillful communicator. The time commitment certainly has been exemplary, 24/7 for Mrs. Beninda. Tonight's report certainly shows the continued progress that has taken place with much professional development and training that has assisted our students in their academic achievement. There's been a great deal of two-way communication with families, as we heard tonight, and we've heard the message from that in the community about what is taking place. I hear it all the time. As shown, the communication is ongoing. We have had an increase in diverse, diversity hires, and they've been well-qualified individuals. The system stepped up with future plans with recruitment from within our schools to encourage more students of color to consider teaching as a profession. We have continued with our plans to turn IAs into teachers as we work with Worcester State University. We've continued to work on suspension reductions with more staff training, working with Mass General Hospital, working with parents, more outreach for students, and yes, the work must continue. We have seen a new school emerge as we start a dual-language school coming this fall. This will be a comfortable atmosphere for our students as they can practice their language skills from recess time to lunchtime to riding on the bus going home. Most impressive. The hundreds of evidence-based links that we noticed in this report, and I'm sure anyone who's read the report and spent a great deal of time going through it, has been certainly exemplary. And again, keep in mind, this was only for 12-month period. Over 209 unique forums and webinars were held to support the efforts of families. 66 additional district-level public forums with interpretation help was also available. Four district Spanish forums in over 135 building-based meetings were offered across the district. In addition, the superintendent organized and participated, as she mentioned here tonight, over 461 meetings with community agencies to share information and coordinate support from students and families in the city. Again, as I mentioned, all in a 12-month period. Unbelievable. Just to name a few other links that impressed me were the success stories of the children from school to school, the many community organizations that assisted our district in academic support, and the family engagement data with so many agencies within our city willing to help out. Also, there's been other districts that have reached out to Worcester, including Webster, Springfield, Boston, who have asked and have been there for ideas, support, and collaboration. So needless to say, we have shown certainly urban leadership. One can say that the superintendent was here when she was hired, was not going to be an average person. You're here because you were awesome, and I'm showing it here tonight. Again, congratulations, Superintendent Beninda, in making a difference in this community and in our schools. Let's hope that you'll consider staying on after your contract expires. Thank you for all that you've done and for your great career as an educator.
Anybody else? I do want, okay, go ahead. I was just going to say thank you of all the administrators and the principals and the teachers for working so hard during COVID-19, and it was a challenging time, and everybody seemed to work cooperatively together, and so, behalf of the city, I just want to thank everybody. Some things we can focus on, I think, is the strategic plan, working with the governance committee over the next couple of months and figure where we are going as a city in the future. But thank you again for all the hard work that superintendent and everybody did over the last year. Much appreciated. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You took some of my words right out of my mouth. I was going to thank the superintendent, the administration, the principals, the staff, the teachers, and the families for what was a challenging year. And I think we cannot understate what a difficult year it was for everybody in trying to determine how to educate students. I think we did a great job looking at COVID protocols in our schools and putting things into place and addressed remote learning effectively, and really were, I heard good reports from a lot of families about remote learning. I think that was very positive, and I think the communication, the forums were really effective as well. I think that they were, they were helpful, they were long, but I think they really did provide a lot of information for the families and for the community. I make the point that in community engagement and communication, this is going to be a very different year, we all hope. And the communication will be much more in person. We have to work as hard as we can to make sure our schools are welcoming for families and make sure that parents and community groups are partners with us in educating our students. And we should be really thinking creatively about the lessons learned through technology, and how do we keep some of that technology and use that to our advantage so it helps our communication. Families that have challenges trying to get to the schools with transportation issues or childcare coverages, having these Zoom meetings, as much as we don't like them, they did work to our advantage in many cases, so we should look to blend as much as we can. Just a couple of quick questions, Mr. Chair, and some points. The one data point that I hear about achievement, I think the superintendent mentioned that we're still struggling with our math achievement, and I guess it's clear, it's continuously, it's with the students with disabilities, it's the English language learners, the students in low-income backgrounds, and Latino students who are struggling. And I guess, are the strategic approaches that we're looking to put into place this fall to really address those concerns? Because they were very evident here in the data that we have here. Through the chair, the superintendent.
May I have superintendent?
Yes, through the chair. And I'd just like to share that last week was the superintendent's conference at the Cape, and Desi held a special training for all superintendents. And actually, the area math came up as a concern across the state in the whole, the way of teaching math. So first of all, we have to assess. We're not sure when we're looking at those students that took the remote testing, whether or not those are really where they're at. And so the first thing we have to do is test and find out where are they. The second is find out what skills they're missing, and then provide a way for them to gain those skills at the same time that they're learning the skills for their current grade. So the state has developed, they call it the roadway to acceleration, and that's what we'll be training our principals in, and that's what we'll be training our staff in before the school year starts.
I just really, the numbers that we saw tonight reflect what's really including the Student Opportunity Act. It's the students who are not meeting those achievement levels. We have to get to address those issues and bring them to a higher level of academic achievement. My other question, you just kind of preempted a little bit here. Are there, you know, what are our plans for student assessment for August and September, and then the remediation work? I assume that's the acceleration you talked about.
Yes.
So through the chair, so we will be doing benchmark assessments, plus we are going to do the STAR again. And, you know, our concern about the fourth graders, you know, as we had a conversation about that, is that they really missed from March till June of their third grade year. And third grade is really essential, it's basic skills for math. And then their fourth grade year, for most of the time, we were remote. So though, that particular group of students are students that we really want to give additional focus on. Once of course, we verify if indeed the gaps occur, but we are sure that they probably did, because they missed that second half of the third grade. So for all students, not just math, each school will assess what they need from us in order to provide after-school tutoring or tutoring during the school day for our students, and that's why we saved that money in the budget this year, so that we can provide individual attention to each school based on the needs of their students.
And then finally, Mr. Chair, on the area of diversity and hiring, I, and we will have a topic, an item tonight, the mayor's report coming out as well tonight, and I'll stress that we have to be as intentional as we can about diversifying our workforce. And it's, I think the 12 principals of color is the most important data point that is there, and the leadership in the school and trying to be as intentional there, and I'm glad to see that number there. I will blame, I will also wonder about our own decision-making, where the diversity goal was 17% when in school year 18, we'd hired 22%. So we gave you a goal that was actually lower than the previous years that were achieved, but I'm glad to see us making movement, making progress there, and I encourage us to be as intentional as we can.
Through the chair, so that goal came right from the strategic plan. So the goal for this year was a 17%, and that's why that there came right from there. But we exceeded that, you know, to continue to exceed that goal, we weren't sticking at 17%. We are, you know, actually, the other day, we were discussing, which we'll discuss with school committee in the future, of actually hiring a recruiter. That's their main job. We have been working, having a lot of conversations with Boston, and how do they recruit? They seem to be the most successful in recruiting people of color in many positions, and they do it actually through a recruiter process, a person that is a recruiter, and they keep a dashboard that was very interesting to us, that actually tracks who applies for a job, who gets interviewed for a job, who receives the job, how long have they been, how long do they stay? And we're very interested in also thinking about that position.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Novick, followed by Mrs. Clancy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, first of all, it's important for us as a committee to remember that this is a mid-cycle review. It's not a year, it's six months. We adopted these goals on the 17th of December. The data that we're being given is supposed to only reflect things that have happened since December. They don't entirely, and I think that it's important for us to remember. I honestly am uncomfortable with our calendar on evaluation. I think it doesn't really reflect the school year. My assumption, I wasn't on the committee when this decision was made, is that this was intended so that we could somehow tie it to MCAS scores coming back. I think this past year, we've had a good reflection on how important that particularly was. But it leaves us in a very awkward position, which is that, as I'm sure my colleagues have noted, every single one of these goals is actually now timed out, and we're in the middle of the evaluation cycle. I also want to note for my colleagues, I know Mrs. Clancy has been through superintendent evaluation training. I don't think that most of my colleagues have. The mid-cycle review is actually, here, I'll read it right from Desi's document. "Partway through the evaluation cycle, somewhere near the halfway point, there should be a formative assessment, a check-in on progress. This is not intended to be a written assessment, but rather a chance to discuss accomplishments to that point in time." We're not supposed to have an hour and 45-minute presentation by the superintendent. This is supposed to be, this is the data that you're supposed to have, this is the data that, where we're at, that's what we're supposed to get. The reason that I asked Dr. Frail to send us the backup is that we didn't actually have the data that showed whether or not we'd met the goals in the actual presentation. We had to follow, you had to decide which link you were supposed to find and then follow it. That's not what we're supposed to be getting here. And I'm very concerned that we're not steeping ourselves in the goals of the district the way that we're supposed to here. I have some comments on, in particular, the standards. In terms of meeting the goals, the first thing I will say, Mr. Chair, is that we're going to need to redraft them. So I would suggest that we send this report probably to governance, because we don't have any goals at this point. All of these expired as of June. Probably something we should have thought about at the time, but nonetheless, we need to do that. In terms of the diversity information, I'm uncomfortable with the fact that all I've received in terms of changes is percentages. There's also a discrepancy, incidentally, between the number of, the change net from 19 to 21, between the information that's given here and the information we have in the budget. Pretty significantly, actually. But I'd like to know how many hires have we had, what are the actual positions that they're in, and so forth, rather than just sort of be getting percentage points. It's honestly less informative. And the thing that I keep coming back to on this, as well as on really the rest of what we're talking about here, is we know that it's not just about hiring, it's also about retention. There wasn't, there's a note about retention in the goal, there wasn't any information given about retention. And frankly, recruitment's great, but if what we do is cycle people through, speaking as someone who cycled through a school district because of the culture of the district, then we're not actually achieving what we need to. I will also say, I agree entirely with you, the strategic plan badly needs an update. I think that the evidence given to demonstrate that the strategic plan, or rather, that the budget supports the strategic plan, actually demonstrates that we don't start with the strategic plan when we build the budget. Our budget went up by $48.8 million over last year. The evidence that we got's about $5 million of that. That's not saying, that's saying we don't really start from there. And that's a problem, because if we're, we say that we do that and then we don't, that's a problem. And then also, what are we actually spending our money on if we're not spending it on the strategic plan? As it happens, I think the strategic plan needs to be fixed first. The other thing there that I would note is that the evidence the superintendent gave us in terms of the site councils, which yes, absolutely has been an ongoing concern of mine, demonstrates that the principals are meeting with their site councils after they've had their meetings with central administration. The site councils are supposed to be meeting with the principals to inform their argument to administration when they actually do their, their, their meetings with central administration. So we're doing that backwards, which was my concern. I appreciate having the information. But before those principals are meeting with the superintendent and the CFO and everyone else downtown, they need to be having the meeting with their teachers and their parents and their students to say, what is it that we actually need this year? That's actually going to, among other things, strengthen the hand of the principals. I will also say, and I appreciate Mrs. Clancy checking my memory on this, the comparison on the district goal three was actually not the one that we requested. When we talked about this in governance, what we asked for was that we recreate Group C in 2019 data. C in 2019 data, not look at the actual students that we had that were Group C now that we had had in 2019. Yes, that would be the apples-to-apples comparison. We know that things like student discipline changes over time in terms of how many grades kids are with us, that would actually be the meaningful comparison. I also do feel, just in, you know, all honesty, because this is actually something that's out there in the universe, the chart that backs this up, that talks about the comparison of Group C discipline, that claims that it's a 100% reduction, it's a 14% disciplinary rate in 2019, it's a 2% disciplinary rate in 2021. That's not a 100% reduction. Yes, none of those same kids were suspended, but we did have kids who were suspended. So let's, I first of all, don't like the chart anyway, because it doesn't actually have an X and a Y in access, it doesn't have any data on it. But secondly, let's not claim 100% reduction when we don't have one. To go into the standards, I agree with what Mr. Foley said in terms, I've been very uncomfortable with what we're doing in terms of summertime and what I see with us coming up for next year. This information should be informing, but honestly, it should have already informed what we were doing for summertime. Those were the students that we should have gone and directly recruited for summer programs. That's something that other districts did, that isn't something that we did, and that concerns me, because I think we're losing an opportunity here. And I do expect us to hear updates about what resources we're devoting to closing those gaps. In terms of standard two and human resources management and development, my understanding is that we have a number of contracts that are not updated. Through the chair to administration, would we have any idea how many contracts there are that currently are in abance with individuals, not with collective bargaining units?
Absolutely.
Through the chair, what kind of contracts?
Contracts with individuals who work for us, like administrators.
With principals or?
Principals, central administrators.
So we are working on the contracts, I'd have to, I want to say, we'll have to ask, oh, there she is, Jennifer Boulay, to answer that.
Through the chair, to Conal Novak, I think that we have approximately 15 people who do need updated written contracts, but we would have zero that are expired. Our principal contracts, as you probably know from your work in the industry, principals have an automatic one-year extension. If the district does not notify them in writing in a very specific timely manner, that they will not be renewed. And we have not notified any principals, so they all did get the additional rollover. The principals who are waiting for updated documents to reflect that, we have been in contact with them, and we were awaiting the resolution of the budget, because we did want to make sure that the documents that we shared with them were accurate in terms of salary. So there are zero principals and administrators who are not currently under contract, but there are some who are awaiting updated documents.
Okay, my, thank you. My understanding is that when you start including those beyond principals, it gets up to more like over 20, which considering how many people we have that have direct contracts with the superintendent, is fairly significant. I will note that, I mean, a quick glance at our own agenda demonstrates the level of commitment the school committee has to ensuring that our contracts are up to date. I think that leaving people hanging, particularly when we have people who effectively are at-will employees, is not professional. I also will note, by the way, that at-will employees are particularly vulnerable to coercive action, and that demonstrations of their opinions thus are subject to being tampered with. And I will take that in light both of tonight and other times. Several of us, in terms of fiscal systems, raised concerns at our final meeting about the budget around grant management. And I want to remind my colleagues that we had a report fairly early on in this term that we're returning, or at least we had our history over the past five years, of returning $200,000 or more to the state in terms of grants that weren't actually expended in the timely fashion. I first would ask that we receive an update of that report, that was up through FY19. I would ask that we receive an updated grants report on the grant amounts received, expended, and the amount returned for both FY20 and FY21. The superintendent indicated at our budget meeting that she did not intend to make any changes in fiscal, in grant management, and I just want to express my concern again at a time when we're receiving $120 million from the federal government, that we need to make sure that we actually, among other things, actually spend it all. The final point I'll make, Mr. Chair, is this, that we, there's an extensive list here, and it is a list, around communication. But the goal is actually culturally competent two-way communication. I continue to have concerns about cultural competency, but in particular, the thing that I want to note is that the number of things here that were two-way communication, where people could talk to us and we had to listen, were pretty much limited, as Mr. Foley noted, to the parental forums where people talk to us. We emit a lot, we send a lot, we talk a lot. But if that's most, or just about all you ever do, you effectively are talking at people. And the state's standard, quite deliberately, is intended to be about two-way communication. And I'll note, Mr. Chair, that the family engagement portion of this actually reads, "All families are welcome members of the classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, school, district, and community." I don't know that that's actually the mission and vision of the Worcester Public Schools at this point. It is, however, supposed to be what we're doing. And I know that I've received, and I know I'm not alone, continued community concern about the resistance of this administration about community engagement, and continued family concern about the resistance of this administration to families being meaningfully engaged in their children's education. So I appreciate the update. I assume we'll have work ahead of us in governance to come up with a new set of goals. I would flag those things as being of concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Clancy?
Thank you. Ms. Novick actually hit on a couple of things, but I will, so I might be a little redundant, but there are some things that I would like to express. Again, administration, principals, teachers, I can't thank you enough, the year that you had. It was an incredible year, we made it through, but now we have to start focusing on our next school year, which I think is going to be just as complicated as the one that we just finished. So my one, I do, like Ms. Novick just said, regarding the professional practice goal, again, there's a lot of communication that we put out, we put out, but I want to make sure that it's effective, and that's my concern, is that families are getting effective communication. Because it seemed, every time we held a forum or, you know, phone calls were put out, I would get five phone calls or five emails back, and I just want to make sure that, and we, I mean, we made a little joke about it, that, you know, the connect ed calls, but sometimes I think we sent so many out that so many just got ignored. So effective communication is more important to me than how much we are sending out communication to the families. So that's one thing that I would like to, you know, see done. And I also think that the public forums, the two-way communication, and the first couple of ones that we had, the answering of the questions, is definitely something that we're going to need to continue going forward. The other thing, as, you know, Ms. Novick, you know, stated, and I have some concerns around, is regarding our diversity hires. It seems that we did 33 teachers, 12 staff and administration, and that's wonderful. I think our goal, you know, for our district is to have people of color in front of our students. So there's 60 positions, new hires, that I would like to see break down of and to see what positions that they're in, because we want to make sure, you know, that we have people in front of our students. So that's just the other thing I had, and, so if I could just get a breakdown of the, you know, the 60 positions that are still, that aren't listed on that form, you know, like I said, other than that, I think, you know, it's good, there is some, still some work to be done, and I look forward to this year and seeing where we're going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bean-Carrie?
Thank you, ma'am. Let's see, first I would like to say, congratulations to everyone, our staff at Worcester Public Schools, administration, teachers, our custodians, our lunch people, our nurses, people who work in our school on safety, our accounting, everybody, IT department, outstanding, unbelievable. And we have been through with the rest of the world, not just the country, but the rest of the world, an amazing year. But we were able to educate, we were able to provide training, we were able to have many developed avenues that were beneficial. We need to learn some lessons from those and combine them. So we look forward to the challenging year that we're moving into, we haven't arrived there yet, we're moving into, we have the best education possible for our kids. And I say "our kids" because that's our community. I had the honor of attending as many graduations as I possibly could, and I asked for the number tonight, and it's on the sheet here, and there were 1,660 graduates. I think that was the only number that wasn't in our report. And yes, there's a lot of pages, and yes, I think we're all pretty much working technical pieces of this, and we were able to look at the data and be able to research it and take a look at what the papers had to say, what our administration had to tell us. And do we have some challenges? Absolutely. Do we have things that need to be tweaked? Sure. If we didn't, we wouldn't be running one of the largest districts that is successful. Because we not only are educating our kids, but we are helping our homeless students, we also provided clothing when necessary, we helped people with housing, we fed our community, we did a great deal. So our commitment of not only working with our city councilors, our mayor, our city manager, our superintendent, and the staff so graciously that are here, some of them are here this evening, were able to not only see the progress of what it is to be on a team that has their engine on the right track, but also looking at what we need to do and what the value of our success stories. So yes, there was a tremendous amount of reading for our mid-cycle, but pardon the expression, we all had one hell of a year. We all had one hell of the last six months. Whether you want to count it as 12 months or six months is irrelevant to me, due to the fact that when I look at the goals, what the strategic plan was established, what we had anticipated as school committee members and as a community to ensure that we had budget, accountability, safety, advances in chapter 74, and that that was accomplished using remote engagement. We translated, and every year, I'd be the first to say, step up and say that I've asked about translation in the budget, why it costs a million, $2 million, $400,000. Well, now we know why. Because we got to talk to a lot of people, a lot of people who live in our great city. And the only way we can keep our city great is by working together as a team, looking at what the strategies need to be to overcome the challenges that we can anticipate. But also, we're going to have challenges, as we stated this evening. We may be in a different situation in September, we may be looking at our schools in a different situation. So we have to be ready and prepared. So yes, we do have to combine what our lessons were learned over the last six months, but when I look at 1,660 students that crossed the stage at Pola Park to get their diploma, they were not only educated, they looked happy. They looked happy at the fact that they were moving forward, and that's what we did. We did not stay still, we did not step backwards, we moved forward under challenges that I don't think anyone, not only in this room, but anyone who was listening or watching, could have predicted 18 months ago. So when we look at our collaborative effort, we also have to look at, one of the pieces that was mentioned tonight, collaborative problem solving. So as we move forward, let's look for our solutions, let's look to make sure we continue to discuss what our challenges are going to be, that we keep communication, that we look for the accountability, that we keep our schools safe, and we have the engagement that includes everyone. Because we're going to have a budget that is going to be very unusual, that's all we hear, is we're going to be getting additional money, we're going to be getting additional money. It was in the paper on what the city planned on doing, and so on and so forth, as far as how we're going to be monitoring it. So I think we have a lot of team members that are very experienced, well-educated, well-versed, and they value their positions. And I know that Craig Bonds, who works in the grants department, when you call him and ask him a question, he's right there to give you an answer. He doesn't hesitate, he doesn't turn around and forget to call you back, he gets back to you, he answers the questions. Many years ago, I worked in the grants department, was involved in that. It's an experience, it provides not only numbers and funding, but activities, and again, it also makes you sit down and develop how a team is going to accomplish what needs to be done to ensure that we continue, again, on the right track, we have the right values, and we have endless opportunities. We have a great city. We have a school system that always will have challenges, we have a city that will always have challenges. But when we look at the last couple of weeks in June, and kids got their diplomas, and they're going on to the numerous listing of colleges, they're going on to careers to support their family, going in to serve our country, they looked proud, and we should be proud of what we did. We should be very, very proud. We had one hell of a year, we had one hell of a six months. So as we move forward, I look forward to the accountability, the budgeting, the safety in our schools, the engagement, chapter 74, and the professional development needs to continue. The engagement needs to be there, and we can get it done. We have a radio show. I think that's kind of comical, I'm sorry, because I didn't know anybody listened to the radio anymore. Everybody has all different mechanics and tech work, but that's okay. I think that's a great idea. Good luck to you. There are many acronyms that we used tonight that I made notes of, I'm going to be looking up a few of them. But as far as an overview, let me just say this again. Thank you to everyone, teachers, custodians, all the staff that have worked, the IT department, There have been many challenges, we looked at all of this, we look at our kids, but I'm very proud of our city, I'm very proud of what we've accomplished, and it's definitely an honor to stand here tonight and take a look at a mid-cycle that provided education and engagement for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. So we will send that report to governance, and also, we should probably look at, I think the superintendent would agree, I know Ms. Novick brought it up, maybe changing the dates of how the evaluation works, or this year ran. So this year-end, is it better to do in June, or do the mid-year, mid-cycle in the way we're doing it now? It seems to be off, that we're always behind. I know we talked about it before.
Through the chair, I think, through the pandemic, we got off-cycle.
No, even before that, I think, the year before, I thought, yeah.
Last year, the mid-year was in, not, the year before, the mid-year was in December and the final in June, so that we could inform the district goals of the principals also for their evaluation and for the teachers.
We should have that discussion.
There was a way to get back on target. That would be great.
Okay. And also, the reports are asked, while those in favor, opposed, so ordered. We are going to personnel. We are going to file personnel. What's that? What's that?
Can you just say it?
Sure. Is this your name and city of residence?
I am a Worcester resident.
You can speak right into the microphone.
My name is Megan Marslack, and like Superintendent Benenda, I'm born and raised in Worcester. I still live in the city with my husband, who's a Worcester firefighter, and our two children, both of whom are Worcester Public Schools students. So my son is entering fourth grade. He loves ST math, by the way, which I know because I'm more engaged in what he's actually doing in school now than I ever was. And my daughter will be attending preschool at the New South High in the fall. So when I heard there was a mid-year review today, I just wanted to come down and provide a parent perspective to kind of go along with all the procedure and data that you guys have been talking about. So thank you for allowing me time to express how impressed I've been with Superintendent Benenda's leadership over the past couple of years, particularly during the pandemic. I've greatly appreciated Mrs. Benenda's transparency through these uncertain times. She was able to engage parents and members of the community in new ways to keep us informed and answer our questions. As we've heard a lot tonight, any parent of a Worcester Public Schools student can tell you about the Connect Ed messages. Lots of us found them annoying, but they really were critical in easing my worries, and I'm sure a lot of other parents, too. Worries not just regarding educational models, but also accessing critical community resources, such as where to pick up free food and meals that fed our families. From my vantage point, no stone went unturned in making sure our students had the resources they needed to receive a quality education through the pandemic. Superintendent Benenda and her administration facilitated the distribution of computers and enhanced Internet connectivity to communities most in need. That not only had a positive impact on student learning, but expanded connectivity will continue to have exponential impact on our community as well into the future. Last summer, I was pleased to see the committee praise Superintendent Benenda for her job well-done, leading the district through the crisis, as many of you did again tonight. As we all know, the crisis is not over, and after a year and a half of so much uncertainty, our teachers, principals, staff, and students deserve the steady leadership of Superintendent Benenda. And likewise, Superintendent Benenda deserves the opportunity to continue these impressive results and progress that she's made. I'll wrap up with one final thought. Yeah, it's a simple one, but I think it really makes all the difference. Superintendent Benenda loves this city. Her deep love of place for Worcester and the district's students is evident. The statistics presented tonight really prove that. That type of genuine care and passion for the work is not easy to come by, and we're really, truly fortunate to have Superintendent Benenda leading our district. So thank you for your time.
You want to say something, Ms. Noggin? Yes, go ahead. Just a couple minutes.
Not long at all. Not long at all. Thank you very much. Mayor Petty, Superintendent Benenda, Dr. Freel, members of the school committee. As you know, I'm Roger Nugent, President of the Education Association of Worcester. I am here tonight on behalf of every EAW member to voice our frustration with the delays in settling a fair contract. Our previous contract expired more than a year ago, and since then, you've seen our public school educators perform outstanding work during the most challenging times that most of us have ever seen. Our schools form the backbone of this city. That was on display throughout the pandemic. Educators made every effort to meet the needs of students, navigating new practices to ensure that children stay connected to school, while we all work together to protect the health and safety of our families. Rising to the challenge is what members of the Education Association of Worcester do. The pandemic has taught us how important it is to have a skilled and committed workforce in our public schools. The lack of a contract, the slow pace of settling a new contract, and the lackluster proposals that the district is bringing to the table all threaten to undermine the quality of our public schools. Districts across the state are bracing for shortages of teachers and school staff, just as businesses and other professions are experiencing worker shortages because of the pandemic. The federal government has provided more than $120 million to Worcester and its schools to address the impacts of the pandemic. The state is on track to fully fund the Student Opportunity Act and increase the funding given to our schools. We must use these investments to the benefit of our students, and there is no greater resource for our students than an excellent teaching force. The EAW is seeking a fair contract that acknowledges the experience and the dedication of the educators currently working in the district, and that will continue to attract highly skilled educators. We need a contract that not only addresses the current conditions in our schools, but one that also anticipates near-term and long-term needs. The EAW is prepared to bargain and settle a contract that would justly reflect our members' commitment to the Worcester Public Schools, and that will ensure that Worcester can provide the best possible education to every student attending our schools today and in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we are going back to the agenda. We're going to personnel. My members filed personnel items 2-21 to 1-22. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered.
File.
What's that?
Mr. File.
We are on Response to Administration to Request to Hold C and D for Discussion for the July 22, 2021 meeting, and this is the reports on the bus drivers and the federal grants. I know Mr. Foley's going to have a meeting on buses, I think, August 18. Mr. Foley, is that right? On the buses, you're going to have a meeting, a finance committee meeting?
That'd be a great reference, thank you. We have a meeting scheduled already for August 17, I think, Dr. Freel, but we can check it and announce it.
It's in August anyways. Okay, because we have to, we're going to have to take a vote probably sometime in September, I would think, but on August, on the buses. And Ms. Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the referral. That was what I was going to ask for.
Okay, sorry about that.
I did, nope, being anticipated on referrals is not a problem. I did wonder if there was any update through the Chair to Administration in terms of the holes that we had in terms of bus drivers through Durham?
Ms. Benenda?
Yes, through the chair. So one good thing, what, maybe it's not a good thing, but is that we're no longer going to be transporting the charter school. So there were 10 buses that we used to transport the charter schools. Granted that, because they've got another bus company that they've gone with. So those 10 buses did transport also some of our other students in the tiers. However, that's going to offer us additional flexibility. So prior to knowing that, there were, my conversation yesterday with Durham is that they were six to eight bus drivers short. However, now we'll have to look at the flexibility of those routes now that we're no longer doing the charter school. So right now, they have seven to 10 licensed drivers that will be ready to drive in three weeks. Right now, they're looking to hire 26 additional drivers. They are now giving sign-on bonuses. They have offered competitive salaries to other vendors, and they're, you know, willing to work with us to continue to recruit. So that's it. So we're, you know, six, maybe six to eight, what did I say, six to eight. Short, but I talked to Mr. Hennessy yesterday and asked if we could look to, just in case, the six day drivers. We don't, they're not able to get them if we're able to combine some routes, especially now that we don't have the charter school.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I mean, learning, I just want to make sure that I've got my terminology right. Learning First, which was seven hills, would have had what I believe we refer to as trips. As you say, they're buses that already would have been transporting our students in other tiers. So that possibly frees up that, although I'm wondering exactly how many students that was. I know how big the school is. If we're short six to eight, if, oh, actually, sorry, let me back up a step. That's what Durham is short. Through the Chair of the Administration, is there any update necessary in terms of where the Worcester Public Schools' transportation is? Are we short any drivers?
Your microphone's on, huh? Maureen. Mr. Allen? Your microphone's on. Mr. Allen?
Through the Chair. We are experiencing a couple of retirements over the summer, and we're in the process of pulling civil service lists and hiring to backfill those positions in time for the start of the school year.
Okay. And through the Chair of the Administration, my understanding is that we've been able to pull off the civil service list without that actually being, leaving us with gaps. Is that the case?
I'm sorry, can you re-say the question again?
That we don't anticipate this being something where we say that we're going to pull off the civil service list but still end up with a gap. Is that an accurate reflection?
The plan would be to, yes, the plan would be to fill all of our positions through the civil service process.
Okay, thank you. So by my math, if Durham is six to eight drivers short, if each of our, if each of our buses runs three tiers in the morning and three tiers in the afternoon, that's at least 18 trips that were short. We know that some buses are full and some buses are not full, so let's not assume that each bus is going to have 60 kids on it. But I'm getting up over 100 pretty quickly here, Mr. Chair, in terms of the number of families that are impacted. And I don't think that that's going to be picked up by the 10 trips that were short. So I appreciate that Mr. Foley's going to have a meeting. I would ask that, that meeting, please, address transportation for this year, but transportation after this year as well. And then also, and this is, I think, my particular concern right now, plans to get through this year while making plans for the future. In other words, if there are adjustments that we need to be making, frankly, even in August, to fill whatever gaps there are, I would like us to be giving our transportation the ability to do that. I'd also make a request, while I know that Mrs. Clancy and I both have seen it, if we could, again, have the backup that the prior committee received regarding in district transportation, I would appreciate it, and I would appreciate, I'd make a motion asking if we could get an update reflecting what would happen to those projections if, as was in the budget response, we actually moved ahead with using Esser funds to purchase buses. I know that that would have a financial impact on those out years, and I'd be interested in what that looked like. And incidentally, Mr. Chair, I just want to note that yesterday, the city of Brockton took delivery of something like 60 buses because they've moved to industry transportation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ma'am Superintendent?
That's true about Brockton, but they're also now involved in a lawsuit with the company that does their current transportation. So also, we did meet, we did have a conversation about this, Mr. Allen and our leadership team, regarding that the way we have the budget done, there is no available funding available for purchase of buses at this time, based on the budget that we have proceeded out. And the guidelines set on the buses are really pretty clear. There are certain conditions you have to meet in order to use Esser money for buses. So I do think that we need to be careful with that. We know that this is federal money and that we are going to be accountable at a much higher level for every spending that we make on that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, through the Chair to the Superintendent, I'm well aware of that, which is why I'm concerned about our grant allocation and oversight. We only allocated $40 million of $120 million in Esser funding. We still have at least $80 million to go, and actually, we didn't do line item detail even of the 40 million. So no, we've got plenty of money left. Also, in the backup that your administration was kind enough to give us during the budget deliberation, we actually received all of the information about the delineation around what it would require in order to do that, and one of the main concerns that both the federal and the state government have are time on learning and equity, both of which are directly impacted when our kids can't get to school, which has been the main reason that I keep bringing up transportation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll send that to, these reports to Finance. Are those in favor, opposed, so ordered? Let's see. Response to Administration to Request to Provide a Number of 2021 High School Graduates to Include the Colleges That the Students Plan to Attend. That's from the Administration. Ms. Bean-Carrier?
Jack. We can combine that with GB 1170, sir. One right below it.
Response to Administration to Request to Provide a Number of Seniors by Site Who Receive Certificate of Attainment.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Those two items certainly go hand in hand. We had 1,660 students, three of which received a certificate of attainment. The rest received their diplomas. And question would be, the kids that received the certificate of attainment, are we still working with them so perhaps they can receive their diploma through the Chair of Administration?
Superintendent?
Oh, what's going on? Okay. Through the chair. So depending upon, I don't know what schools those are from looking at that, I'll have to look that up. But basically, how it usually works is the principals work with, whether it's the special ed person, to work with the students to help them pass the, you know, MCAS, if that's what the issue was for their certificate of attainment. Provide during the summer, we have a lot of students that are coming in and working to try to complete the work that they need to do, and then, of course, if it's an MCAS, we'll have to wait until the next MCAS to see where we're at with that.
Well, I certainly wish those graduates, all of the graduates, much success, and hope some of them stick around in Worcester. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Bean-Carrier. And we need a motion, Dr. Freel, I think, to file 1-169.1 and 1-170.1. All in favor, approves, so voted. Next item, 1-171.1 from Ms. Bean-Carrier, Ms. McCullough, Mr. Monfrie, and Ms. Novick. It's the Response to the Administration to Request to Provide the Number of Students Enrolled in the Freshmen enrolled in the freshman class at Worcester Technical High School. Include both the number that applied and those on the waiting list. Ms. Bean-Carriera?
Thank you for this information. Continue, and we'll always continue to highlight Chapter 74 schools, what we have to offer. And when I look at Worcester Technical High School, right now, we have 464 students on a waiting list. And some may look at this like, this is, you know, terrific. We have so many kids that are interested. I look at this as we're short on letting our kids know we have Chapter 74 in other schools. We need to get that out there more and more, not only with the students but with the parents. We also need to work on how we can increase the number of students. Now, we spoke of this a couple of years ago, where we were going to increase each class by a number of students, not, so it's not just a bulk in one area. If we could review that, Superintendent?
To the Superintendent?
Through the Chair. So the total number for Worcester Tech, we would, we had small number of students last year because some students chose not to go because it was going to be a remote year. But each year, if we accept this number that we accepted this year, then that would be full. Our obligation in building the tech school would be complete, to continue every single year accepting that number of students. See, the challenge right now is that you cannot enter in your sophomore, junior, or senior year, right? So we have some numbers simply because people chose last year not to attend.
The other piece of this is always keep in mind, when a student, for whatever reason, is asked to exit Worcester Technical High School, we don't have that ability in our comprehensive high schools to ask a student to exit our high school. However, they are brought back, and there are times that students at Worcester Technical High School are then told that they have to go back to the comprehensive high school. When there is an opening of that and a student does exit in that manner, do we fill that position or do we leave it empty? Superintendent?
So through the Chair, you can't fill that position because the students have missed their hours in their trade. So, but however, that practice has stopped for about three years now. We no longer, if there's a student that might have to exit, the only place they would go to the Joe Kramer Center, maybe to take some academic classes, but they're still able to access their trade. So we, that doesn't occur as much as it did in past years where students, for example, that had large discipline issues may no longer be able to stay at Worcester Tech. That doesn't happen anymore. So the only students that may exit would be seniors who are, maybe failed too many classes and unable to get that high school diploma, and they would go to the Joe Kramer Center. And we would never replace, put a person in as a senior.
As we look for the next stages of how we're looking at Chapter 74 and what we have to offer, I just make a motion that we once again receive an updated list of the Chapter 74 courses that are offered in all of our schools labeling the school and then the specific Chapter 74. Now, we're going into South High School in September. We have a new high school. Can we review once again, please, what is going to be offered under Chapter 74 into the new South High Community School?
Superintendent Benadine?
Through the Chair. So auto diesel is one of the very unique programs that's not offered anywhere in this area. Rhode Island does have a diesel program. Actually, and I think maybe Fall River also does those two, but there's not any diesel program around this area. So that's one. Culinary arts. And I just have to say that I went to see that kitchen last week, and it is superb. It is better than any kitchen I've seen in a restaurant. It has everything you can imagine in that culinary kitchen there. And then early childhood, which is connected also to the infant toddler program and the two preschools. So you're going to be able to get your certificate in infant toddler as well as in, you know, preschool. So it's a great opportunity. The other place that that preschool one is taught in culinary only at this point is Worcester Tech.
So when we look at our Chapter 74 courses that are coming up, these students, 464 students that are on a waiting list, they're throughout the city. So they are looking at hearing, so they're listening tonight, they say, you know what? I would like to go to their culinary at South High. What is their opportunity, Superintendent, and what is their process?
Superintendent?
Through the Chair. So they, we just have to contact the principal, Jeff Kramer, of South High and apply, there's an application to apply for Chapter 74 programs, both the ones at North, Dougherty, and South. And another important component that is very successful, and we actually just had Kelsey Lamro from Mass Hire come on with us, which was a great, a great hire, is the Innovative Pathway Program. So our Innovative Pathway Program is an opportunity for kids to go to their comprehensive high school and in the afternoons, go to Worcester Tech and get those certifications. That's a very strong program, more students should take advantage of.
And the number of students that can take advantage of that particular avenue?
So each high school, it's really not limited. Each high school can send students to that program. Right now, I think we started, I think we're over 200 students in that program now and looking to expand it.
And when we look at professional development for our counselors in our schools and our guidance counselors and our teachers, is there any information in reference to the Chapter 74's courses that are available, not just at Worcester Tech but at our other sites, that is brought to their attention?
Yep, through the Chair. So we are reimagining our high schools right now, and I work with the Bar Foundation. So part of that work is the Portrait of a Graduate, so what can we expect from elementary to middle to high school? That work has been done in the middle and the high schools now, and part of that work is the key role of the guidance counselor and the Masca model in helping prepare our students and families also about the many opportunities that we offer. So we are continuing to work in that area.
Because as we know, part of the application and part of the reason some of these kids are on the waiting list is when their counselor fills out their application, fills out their form, they're rated. Their numbers that didn't meet, what, a 95 or a 96, they may be down in 85. And when that makes the difference on who gets accepted at Worcester Technical High School. So as we move forward, I would like to think that we are not only educating our kids and our parents, but our staff, so they, this is a selling point for all of our students, for all of our sites, to then be able to say that you can make your application at Worcester Tech. However, if you're on the waiting list and you are number 325, then you have an opportunity to perhaps go to another school. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have to be in your neighborhood, but you have that opportunity, or you have to, an opportunity to go after school to find what you may like up at Worcester Tech and be able to get your certification and get some hands-on experiences through that. So what, when I look at this particular item, I certainly appreciate the fact that they have a number of students through the halls at Worcester Technical High School. But again, my concern was the 464 kids that are looking to attend Worcester Technical High School. And I'm hoping that at some point, we can come up with a process where if they are on a waiting list, they receive some type of letter, brochure, that shows them and explains to them what our other schools are. So that'll be at a later date that I'll put something on the agenda for that because I think the kids that are on that waiting list, I hear from many of them because of their interest, and I try to express the idea that we have other opportunities for these kids, and it's certainly, I feel, very, very important. Thank you.
Through the Chair, can I also, also bring back the item to the school committee regarding the change of the acceptance policy for Worcester Tech, which we will be presenting to this committee for approval? So some of the concerns of parents regarding, so only the kids with the 95s get in, certainly will be addressed. And as far as the form that the guidance counselor fills out, the rule this year and last year, what was a little more difficult this year because some kids were still remote, is that it has to be done as a team. So the student and the team teachers, because all middle schools are teamed, and the guidance counselor fill that out together. So instead of a trained guidance counselor that knows how to check the right boxes and say what needs to be said, it has to be a team approach now for that, for the guidance form that does come in. However, there's changes now in the area of discipline attendance and grades also for the new attendance policy.
I look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Ms. Novick?
That was actually exactly what I was going to ask about, so thank you, Madam Superintendent. What I, that item is actually in my subcommittee. I don't know how we want to take that. The reason that I stand to address this item is I would be interested in what the demographics of the data is that we just received, data R that we just received, because that, of course, has been the entire sort of state conversation, has been not only what the student body looks like, but also what happens in every step of the way. What does the student body look like that could be applying? Who then applies? Who then is admitted and who then chooses to matriculate? The state has been tracking the demographics of each of those groups and coming to some interesting conclusions in terms of what happens over time. I realize, to your point, Madam Superintendent, that obviously, this is a non-representative year, as we are going to continue to say from henceforth and forward. Nonetheless, I would be interested in what that looks like in terms of how that breaks out. I will also say, just to sort of put a card on the table already, that I was interested in some of the proposals that were being made by some of the other public bodies in terms of what the state ought to have been doing rather than what the state actually did, because the state opens the door to being even more inclusive in terms of how your admission looks like. And I think that we have a responsibility as the school committee that runs, that has oversight of a technical high school that also is in a district. We're unusual in that, alone with only Boston and Springfield, I believe. And I think that that gives us an extra measure of making sure that Worcester Tech meets the needs of the city of Worcester, whereas the regional VOTECs, I think, can more think of themselves in terms of just their one little school. So look forward to that report. Happy to take it wherever it's necessary. But I do think that one of the things we need to be careful about is really looking through that tracking of the demographic data.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Through the Chair. So in the development of our plan to change the acceptance policy for Worcester State, we were able to run the data from all the past years and check to see how many Ls were accepted. Was it discipline that, you know, we were able to take each item and see what was it that prevented, say, all students from getting in, or what was that area that, that helped students get in? So we are in the process of running this year's acceptances, and we find that data fascinating from looking at last year's. And the new way of doing it that we have developed actually did increase non-traditional, I would say, students from going to Worcester Tech, but also the inclusion of more L students getting accepted to Worcester Tech.
Okay, thank you. So we will, we can file that? Or? Okay. We want that?
Is that, yeah, should that come to school and student performance so that we can have the discussion? Where, where do you anticipate the referral going for the change in?
Through the Chair, that would be fine with me as long as then it could go out to committee and get a vote so that we can submit it to the state.
Right, I just, I was figuring that whatever we were doing in terms of admissions policy, we'd send a subcommittee anyway. Okay, thank you.
So send that to committee. Are those in favor, opposed, or ordered? Request that the school committee consider canceling the meeting on Thursday, November 4th, 2021. Ms. Bean-Carriera?
Considering the fact that a number of us will be going to a conference down at Cape Cod on that, starting that Wednesday on November 3rd, I'm asking that we either reschedule it if that's going to be a problem, or straight out cancel the meeting.
Okay, we, let's cancel the meeting, and if we have to add one, we will at that time.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Ms. Novick?
People don't want to keep up my tradition of going down and back. That's what I've always done. Thank you, I appreciate that. That will make my life easier, too. The one thing I did want to call to my colleagues' attention, though, was September 16th, when we have a meeting scheduled, is Yom Kippur.
Is it?
Yes, it is. So we, I think in terms, while we're looking at our calendar, I don't have that opinion. We can move it wherever people would like to, but I think we probably should understand that it's an important holiday for many.
Then we'll have the court look at that and make a recommendation.
Great, thank you.
Whether we reschedule or just cancel it.
Should we schedule September?
Probably reschedule it, I would guess. Depending on, I'm not sure. We meet August 28th. How many meetings in September do we have? Just?
Two, lots and lots of meetings.
You cancel when we have the one. Yeah, okay. We'll just see if we can reschedule that one. Okay, we'll send that to the court. Are those in favor, opposed, or ordered?
We have September 2nd. September 16th.
Oh, we have one on the 2nd.
We have the 2nd.
Okay.
And you have the 16th.
Request that the Administration provide a report in August on the summer school programs to include academic progress, attendance, community involvement, number of ELL students, number of grades, one through, one and two students. Mr. Monfredo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this year, summer school has been, certainly been a challenge for both staff and students, actually looking for a break from the pandemic. So I do appreciate results coming next month on the report. However, let's stop and evaluate the items as listed in the agenda and look for ways to expand summer school opportunities. Research for decades has confirmed that summer loss, especially among our low-income students, does take place if they are not engaged in summer learning. Thus, they are likely to start school behind and face ongoing struggle to catch up. And again, this is where the achievement gap widens. Come next year, as a school system and as a community, let's continue to look for additional ways for us to expand summer learning. Summer school can't be an afterthought, and I know that we need to look for assistance from the community. We need to consider and request now and give additional summer school expansions with the community due consideration. So I would appreciate it if this item come August, that we come up with a tentative plan of how we can improve summer learning for next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Those in favor, move forward to the Administration. Are those in favor, opposed, or ordered? Set the date, recognize students from the Worcester Technical High School who received the gold medals in career pathways, health services, in the 2021 Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference, led by Ms. McCullough. So set the date for Thursday, September 16th, or if it's subject to change, 2021. Those in favor, opposed, or ordered? Request that the Administration provide the number of consultants or advisors that are under capital expenditures, grants, or the funding. Ms. Bean-Carriera?
As it reads me.
All those in favor, refer that to the Administration. Are those in favor, opposed, or ordered? Request that the Administration adopt Smart 911 program for all WPS building sites. Ms. Bean-Carriera?
This has to do with safety of our schools, our students, and our staff. So I look forward to hearing from the Administration on this. I think it's a program that comes highly recommended. It's going to-- It's going to administration, and when it comes back, I assume that it'll be a full package of not only the information, but if there is, what the cost would be for two or three years. Is that how we're going to, through the chair, to the administration? Does that sound as though it's something you would put together?
Who would that be?
Yeah, through the chair, we can do that.
Yes is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Novick?
Could I consider that, could I suggest that we recast the item? Because what the item says is, request the administration adopt. If what we're looking for is a report, could we instead say that we're asking for a report, please?
So, okay. Ms. Bean-Carier? Wait to get the reports, people like to know what we're voting on, I guess.
I am looking to first adopt the program, but I certainly don't have a problem with having it reviewed by administration prior to adopting.
School committee would like to review it. Mr. Vazella? Because we don't, some people don't know what this is, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The Smart 911 program is a program that the city manager and the city was to have started to adopt. It is a program that, where a lot of information is being stored into software, a software program, where in the event dispatch gets contacted by a particular individual in a certain building, and they will be able to know, for instance, where a number of things are in that building that's crucial to respond to the event. The AED, the location of the AED, where is it shut off in the building, and things like that, where public safety can act very quickly and respond accordingly. So we were asked by the city manager if we could go into a presentation with, the company's name is Rave, and they are the ones who are spearheading this Smart 911 program. So from emergency management with the city manager, we did have one meeting so far, and we are becoming acquainted with the Smart 911 program. And based on what I can tell you right now, I will probably be referring to the superintendent and recommending that we do adopt it as well.
Okay, so we can get a report back on that?
Absolutely. I think if you would give us the timeline being by mid-September, that would be very reasonable for us to give a report.
Okay, sounds good. Ms. Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If it would be possible for, to have included in the report, what of that information we already effectively are either legally or by regulation required to share with emergency services? I know that there's a number of requirements that the state puts on us already in terms of what our buildings need to share with things like the fire department. So I'd appreciate effectively knowing what we already do alongside what the proposal is. Thank you.
We'll consult with the city manager through the city solicitor's office for that information.
Get a report back then. Would you say mid-September?
Correct.
Okay. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Approve the job description for the special ed, special emotional warning specialists for the applied behavior analyst, ABA. Approve on a roll call.
Ms. Bean-Carier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell-Ovek?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. To approve the job description for the system-wide bilingual evaluated teacher of moderate special needs, roll call.
Ms. Bean-Carier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell-Ovek?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, request that the administration work with the mayor, city council, and others and all parties to address concerns related to the homeless population, the area Lincoln Street School. We're going to refer that to the administration. Is Ms. Novick? Is Molly McCullough?
I'm sorry.
Molly McCullough?
No, I don't think so.
I can't tell.
Diana. Mr. Tucker. Just said I don't know.
Okay, so we'll send that to the, I know Ms. McCullough had concerns with the school in that area, and.
Friday letter.
Oh, Diana, okay, Diana. Ms. Bean-Carier?
Thank you. What we were looking for is a report back in a Friday letter prior to August 11th with what action has already been taken regarding the situation and plans for the upcoming school year, and also the ways the school committee can work with the city to assist. Then information can be shared with the school, the families, and the neighbors.
So.
Okay, so I know the city manager's working on this, and.
Right, an update on this prior to August 11th.
Through the chair, I did receive, and I think the mayor may have too, an email today asking that we attend the community meeting at the church across from Lincoln Street School in August, right?
Right, and that's why, excuse me, Mayor, that's why the request is prior to August 11th in a Friday letter.
Okay.
So we could have the information prior to the neighborhood meeting.
Through the chair, most of the things that are happening have nothing to do with Lincoln Street School, right? It has to all do with Oriole Drive and what's happening there, and then people coming on to the school grounds with needles, right? It really has very little to do with what the school could do, has, you know, I think it's a joint thing we have to discuss with the city.
Right, and again, that's why we're asking, so we have a team working on this and some discussion, and perhaps some solutions.
Okay, so we will send that.
Thank you.
We will send that to the administration. All those in favor, oppose, so ordered. Approve the job description for the grant contract specialist. Approve on, probably doing so. Ms. Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, no concerns over the position itself, but we are approving a number of positions that came through in the budget and related to our sort of ongoing conversation around the federal funding. When can we expect to see the jobs description for the ESAR program coordinator, which was an ad that came through in the, in one of the rounds of the updates that we've gotten?
Through the chair, I guess I'll do this one. So I just want to introduce to you Mako Andrade. He's our new accountability and research manager, and we've had several meetings. So he might want to tell you a little bit about the new positions, including that we're putting in RFP for a company to actually do the monitoring of the ESAR grant funding. So let me introduce Mako to you, and he can explain to you what is the new positions in his office and what we're doing about monitoring the ESAR funds.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Members of the board. I'm Dr. Mako Andrade. As superintendent has mentioned, I just started a few weeks ago. With the ESAR funds, we're looking to create an RFP to put out a bid to get a consulting firm to come in and evaluate the services and the services and, excuse me, well, some of the work that will be happening through ESAR funding to be able to report back to the Fed and to, you know, make sure that the services are meeting whatever deliverables we set.
So, thank you, and welcome, and I've been meaning to send you an email because you're actually the administrator for my subcommittee. The, my, and that sounds fine. My understanding, though, that part of what we were concerned about was literally the coordination of the programs that were going to be running through ESAR and ensuring that that had oversight, that it wasn't only about the evaluation of whether or not those programs were particularly achieving particular kinds of goals. That sounds honestly a little bit more like what we probably should be doing through SOA. So can someone explain to me what the change has, what triggered the change in terms of the idea here? And that may be a question for you, or it may be a question for someone else in the administration.
Dr. Amber?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the, I'm sorry, I'm not sure about the coordinator. I know we've discussed the position of trying to put out the bid. The evaluation of the services that'll be provided.
So we are increasing some, so this is an accountability issue. So we are increasing the positions in the office of research and accountability. Well, you know, there'll be a testing specialist, an evaluation specialist. There is also a position for the grant contract specialist. And all of this, because this ESAR is a coordination between finance, grants, and accountability. And so we can actually address that if you want, as a report at the next meeting.
Well, really, thank you. Really, all I was looking for was, was what triggered the change, because we had effectively a list of positions that we were looking to have added. And I'm relieved to hear that this office is being rebuilt, because that's adding back positions they used to have. In this particular concern, my concern, though, honestly, and this is why I co-sponsored Ms. Bean-Carier's item just prior here, is we are a big enough system where it frequently makes more sense for us to hire people than to contract services out. And this is a big enough issue that having that monitoring and oversight in-house struck me as being wise. That's why I didn't question that decision at the budget time. So that's why I'm asking about that sort of change from it no longer being a position to now it being a contracted service.
So in terms of the valuation, yeah. In a circumstance like this, it's time limited. We have three years to work with the ESAR funds. For, I think, a number of reasons, it makes a lot of sense to try to work with an agency or institution that's just very familiar and has a capacity to do a lot of the research and evaluation work. You know, we can work through them to set some deliverables, be crystal clear about what we want to see happening, what we expect to get back, and we can manage that. Also, it just provides a little bit of support for us if the Fed happens to come back and say, you know, how did you spend the funds? What did you do, you know, in these areas? How do we know that things worked? And, you know, folks who will be coming in, again, with that expertise and not having to deal with some of the day-to-day work that would pop up, that we'd have to be responding to inside of the office, is just more beneficial for making sure that we hit the targets we have to hit.
Okay, thank you. I suspect that you may potentially be defending a decision that you didn't make. Nonetheless, I'm going to reserve my judgment on this one. I think that, that the earlier proposal probably was better, but I certainly will support this position.
Okay, so we will do on a roll call?
Ms. Bean-Carier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell-Ovek?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. To accept the CVTE Student Support Impact and Recovery Grant in the amount of $60,000 that was at Technical High School effective from July 1st, '21 to June 30th, 2022. Roll call.
Ms. Bean-Carier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell-Ovek?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. To accept the Massachusetts Life Sciences Center STEM Equipment and Professional Development effective July 1st, 2021, and June 30th, 2022. Roll call.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just very briefly, I did want to just note, this is elementary school hands-on labs, which is one of the giant holes that I think that we have. This is fantastic. I'm really glad to see this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, roll call.
Ms. Bean-Carier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell-Ovek?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next, is to consider the Worcester Teacher Pipeline Recommendations for Diversifying Retained Teachers for of Color, a comprehensive proposal. I just want to thank, the reason I put this on here, so the school community members can have a chance to look at it, and I know you probably, I think we sent it to you anyways, but, and, but I just want to thank Barry Maloney and Ray Lewis from Mississippi State University, and all the volunteers, and in the report, there's all the people involved, all the colleges that were involved, Worcester State, Clark, Assumption, Holy Cross, Quinzigman, and Hilda Ramirez. It was probably her idea, running back a few years ago to get this done, if I remember right. So I want to thank Hilda Ramirez also. And, you know, it does talk about diversifying the workforce, which we talked earlier tonight about, and we just need to figure that out. Every city in, I think, in the country is probably facing the same issue. And I just want to thank the superintendent and her staff who participated. I know she's supportive of this. And, and also, this is a bit diversifying, but how retention's important, too, the report talks about. And also talks about residency mentors and making sure that as children, as especially the young people who go through the system, get them into, it's a good career teaching, I think, and, and it's hard, it's not easy, that's for sure. But, but I think it's a rewarding career, and so I think this is an important report. So I just asked the administration, the form of a motion is to maybe, where are we with this report? You know, what do you need to do? And some of it, it's going to take, this is years in the making, so it's going to take some time to get there. So maybe strategically, how we move forward and how we can answer some of the issues, get a detailed report addressing this, and I think we'll send this, I think the governance is the, yeah, what's that?
I was going to say, it seems like it should go to a subcommittee.
Yeah.
So that we can keep an eye on it.
Yep.
I mean, it's, it's hiring, which is sort of governance, it's data, so it's sort of student, I mean, it's operations, so arguments of no, I mean, it could be any of those.
Okay. Ms. Monfredo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly enjoyed reading the reported, and something that, that we have discussed in the past, and I discussed it with Dr. Lewis, Dr. Ray Lewis at Worcester State University. On page 54 of the report, it talks about what we're doing as a, as a system with our future teachers club and with our IAs becoming teachers, and it was good to see, see that was part of the report. And the recommendations for future, future growth certainly was well done. I'd like to add that we need to, and add, as Worcester State, I'm sorry, as, as we do at Worcester Public Schools, add that we actively need to recruit students by talking to them one-on-one with their parents about the merits of teaching as a profession, and also how we're going to be helping them, helping their students, in expanding the summer future program as was suggested in the report. So in a motion, I'd like a report to recommend that we get a report back next July as where we are with, with the program. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monfredo. So we'll send that to governance.
Yeah, my motion, too.
I'm sorry, I missed your motion.
Yeah, the motion was that we get the report back next July as where we are with the program.
Okay, and maybe also my request, too, we get a report back, how we're going to address all the issues. I think the, you worked so hard on it, and I think the whole committee, it was a number, it had to be 30 people, 40 people, that they'd probably like to see we're taking this seriously and where we're going.
Yeah, it's great.
Yep. Those in favor, oppose, so ordered. To prove prior fiscal year payment in the total amount of $1,816.38 to caregivers for transportation. Roll call.
Ms. Bean-Carier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell-Ovek?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. To approve a prior fiscal year payment in the amount of $1,409.60 to FW Web Company, Inc. Roll call.
Ms. Bean-Carier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell-Ovek?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Approve a prior fiscal year payment in the amount of $1,415.25 to another security agency, Inc. Roll call.
Ms. Bean-Carier?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell-Ovek?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, just making sure you get 1-191.
I missed that? Okay, oh, yes, I did. Yep, to accept the Career Technical Initiative Planning Grant in the amount of $10,000, effective June 15th, 2021 to August 31st, 2021, roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough? Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell, Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, to approve a prior fiscal year payment in the amount of $1,415.25 to Archery Security Agency, Inc., roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley? Ms. McCullough? Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell, Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. To approve a prior fiscal year payment in the amount of $2,199.53 to Pearson, Inc., roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough? Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell, Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. To approve following donations, Woodland Academy from the Boys, what did I say? Boys Tops of Education, and also to Woodland Academy from Trinity Church at Northborough to be used for uniforms, and also the Worcester Public Schools from Blackboard Giving Fund on behalf of ABV's, roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough? Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell, Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. To consider a prior fiscal year payment in the amount of $108, $108.8 for the mileage reimbursement to a staff for the English wear and a program, roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Excuse me, yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough? Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell, Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. To consider naming the dual-language school at the former St. Stephen's School, Mrs. Peneto? Want to talk about that? I was going to send that to committee anyways, but go ahead.
And to the committee?
Yeah. That's what...
The only problem is that until we give a school a name, we cannot get a designation from DESI. So there, it's holding up our designation as a school assignment of data until the school has a, has a name. So if it could come in and out of committee quick...
You want us to pass this tonight? You can do that.
I'm just wondering if people are comfortable doing that.
I am. I just sent the committee on here, so. So we can vote that tonight. Is there any problem with it? Mr. Monfredo?
Would the school committee and administration consider naming the school the Worcester Dual Language Academy, and name the school auditorium after Emmanuel Fedema Auditorium, or whatever is in that school, with a write-up about this fallen hero, and how he represents the vision of our dual-language school, and how he pursued his education, career, and personal life, and his role as a model in this community? Just a thought.
Yeah, we can send that to the administration, but I think the school's going to be called La Familia, which represents family, which is a familiar family, correct?
I mean, either way, I was just giving another suggestion.
On recommendation of the advisory board that I was working on, it was La Familia Dual Language School, meaning the family at the center. So it's not just for in honor of the police officer, but it's the, for all families. And then if we wanted to have a plaque inside, certainly, that would be nice to have. There's not an auditorium in St. Stevens, but inside the main door or something would be great to have a...
Near the office door.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'm afraid that, okay, so we're going to pass this tonight, roll call.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough? Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell, Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, to approve a prior fiscal year payment in the amount of $771.84 to Zendesk, Inc., roll call.
Ms. Biancheria?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. McCullough? Mr. Monfredo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connell, Novak?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, next is, okay, we'll, the motion is going to executive session, we will not be returning to open session. Oh, we may have to a couple of contracts, okay, we might be, okay, we're going to say we're returning to open session, we have a couple of contracts that might have to be signed off on tonight. So to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to conduct collective bargaining regarding grievance 2221-11, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the following items, on the bargaining position of the public party, and the chair so declares, so I so declare on all the following items, successive contract negotiations, Massachusetts Laborers District Council for on behalf of the Worcester Public Services Employees Local 272, and Laborers International Union of North America AFL-CIO Custodians, Massachusetts Laborers District Council for on behalf of the Worcester Public Schools Employees Local Union 272, and the Laborers International Union of North America AFL-CIO, Educational Secretaries Massachusetts Laborers District Council for on behalf of the Worcester Public Schools Employees Local Union 272, and the Labor Business International Union of North America AFL-CIO Unit D Computer Technicians, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on successive contract negotiations, International Union of Public Employees Plumbers Steam Fitters Local 125, International Union of Public Employees Tradesmen Local 135. And also successive contract negotiations, Education Association of Worcester Units A and B Teachers and Administrators, and successive contract negotiations, Education Association of Worcester Instructional Assistance Unit, and education, also Education Association of Worcester, and Worcester School Committee, American Arbitration Association Case Number 0120015-2596, elimination of extra time at the level four school, at level four schools. Education Association of Worcester and the Worcester School Committee Grievance 20-21-09, class action grievance, not being paid while in quarantine due to COVID, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the public party, on behalf of the Worcester Public Schools, on the Massachusetts Laborers District Council and for the half, behalf of the Worcester Public Schools Employees Local Union 272, the Laborers International Union of North America AFL-CIO Custodian, Worcester School Committee Grievance, payment regarding payment of employees during quarantine period. Okay, and successive contract negotiation, Education Association of Worcester, Worcester Public Schools of Parent Liaison Association, and also to get extra session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel superintendent of schools. So the motion is going to executive session, we'll return to open session.